Meeting order, please.
Councilmember Cormac. Councilmember DeBois.
Here.
Mayor Phil Seth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Here.
Councilmember Niss.
Councilmember Koo.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka. Five present. Six present.
And Liz said she might miss part of this session, but she would be here later. Okay. The first order, the first item on the agenda is actually a study session. And so we'll do that. And that will go from 5:00 to 6:30. At that time, we will proceed into agenda changes, additions, deletions, city manager comments, and oral communications. Let's see, are we waiting for the city manager?
We're gonna call.
We're gonna call, okay. Let us then proceed. So the first item on the agenda is a study session with the city's state lobbyist related to the 2019 session. And welcome, and thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you very much. If you want, would you like me to jump right into it, or do you want to wait for the manager?
Why don't we jump right into it?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Nicolau DeLuca. I appreciate everyone's time today. This is going to be an overview of where things stand in Sacramento. Then I envision, based on past work sessions with the city, some questions and answers, and I'll address as many questions as I possibly can. And then next steps. I prepared a memo to help give a brief overview, and then also another handout, how a bill becomes a law. More importantly, how a bill becomes a law because it has the dates for this legislative cycle, which I think is gonna be helpful. So I will just jump right into it. If we were looking at a marathon, we're at mile three of 26.2. The legislative session is just getting underway. The governor, January 10th, released his budget, showed the outline of the policy topics he would like to address this upcoming year, as you know. And then in May, when we get revised numbers, he does the May revise, and that changes his budget. And then the budget discussions start in earnest. The subcommittees for both the Senate and the Assembly, when it comes to the budget, will start meeting in March. And those are more workshops on different proposals. You'll see what's kind of laid out on what impacts the city of Palo Alto. I want to highlight, the end of February, February 22nd, is the deadline to submit legislation. More than likely, we're gonna see around 1,700 to 2,000 bills. A lot of those will be what we call spot bills, intent bills. So if you see a bill that's only two pages, that means it's gonna be thoroughly revised in the upcoming weeks. Policy committees start in March, but more specifically in April. The, I think of note, what's certainly on the city's mind is what's being referred to as the CASA legislation. That's housing-related bills. There are the 10 elements of CASA. Not every element has a bill yet. The elements that do have bills, some of those are spot bills. As you'll see, that's on pages two and three of the handout. A general rule when it comes to legislation, what our firm likes, what we call tips and tricks, when we see a legislative proposal that we would like changed, we recommend a position of support if amended, that has us coming in on a more friendly tone, a more conciliatory tone, and we like to suggest specific changes. We're not big supporters of just coming out and opposing a bill without making suggestions or saying specifically why. And sometimes, when you just come out and oppose a bill, that kind of backs us in a corner. So a general tip and trick of our firm is we like to recommend support if amended. There are, with regards to the housing bills, I think there's some policies that the city will have concerns with. I think there's other policies we'll definitely watch and monitor. And a suggestion that the city manager and I were speaking about recently, this afternoon, would be almost coming back to you all, once the bills start taking specific shape, to get some feedback and some direction. So I think that's something that we'd definitely like to do. One other point with regards to ways of influencing legislation, another tip and trick, especially on something like housing, big supporter of regional efforts. Hypothetically, if there are some concerns that we see reaching out to either the county or other neighboring cities, working together as a coalition, agreeing on what suggested changes we want, I think that's a lot more powerful way to make some changes as opposed to being on an island. Again, this is case by case, but that's another rule of thumb I like to propose, is the regionalism. With that, happy to answer any questions and discuss any items in further depth.
Wow, let's see, anybody wanna go first?
No question too hard, or?
Oh, I've got a couple. Yeah, I've got a couple. Well, let me ask this. In practice, you know, bills are gonna be drafted by the end of February. In practice, when is this, I mean, what, I mean, how much latitude do we have to, I guess, that's the wrong question, I was just, when is the appropriate time for us to have latitude to try to change these things?
Try to change them.
When's the sweet spot? I mean, obviously, you get out to July, it's probably too late, right? But, you know, you know, February 28th, you know, might be too early, right?
That's a great, great question. Before I forget, about two weeks ago, Ms. Dallor and I were in Sacramento. We checked in with Assemblymember Berman's office and Senator Hill's office, just kind of laid some general framework. I like recommending policy changes as soon as possible. Once we actually see what's in print, being prepared, predicting what could be in there if we don't already have our hands on the language, I like to make the recommendations. I'd say ideally March or April, on what changes we'd like to see. Prefer to make suggested changes on the front end. That way, once the changes are made, we could be supporters of the bill down the road, and also keep an eye on any upcoming changes. But I, March, April's a good general rule of thumb, as to when, start weighing in on changes.
Thank you. Councilmember Koo.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Thank you for coming down and
My pleasure.
...you know, scheduling this. Ed, thank you for scheduling this so early in the year, you know, so we can get ahead of things. And I really appreciate that you put together the timeline, because that was my first question, you know, can you kind of run us through the timeline and everything, so that really helps. I just, before I get into it, I just kind of want to remind that we do have foundational principles, right?
Yes.
For our city here, in terms of both federal and state legislative priorities, and one of them is to protect and increase local government discretion, oppose items that preempt or reduce the authority or ability of local government, et cetera, right? So you just said, you know, with all the bills that comes out, a lot of it is going towards regional efforts, and it would be best to try to support by amendments, et cetera, and to come in as, but how do we support when it ultimately comes in and does a chop-chop and, you know, take away our local controls?
Absolutely, great question. And with regards to the principles and the foundation principles, that's what Ms. Dallor and I were using when we spoke to Senator Hill's office and Assemblymember Berman's office. We were also updating them on some of the actions that the city's recently taken about your overlay zone when it comes to affordable housing. I mean, it's a case-by-case basis. You know, I think on some of the housing bills, where they're trying to streamline some of the projects, we look at what the specific impacts are on the city, and we say, you know what, this is why it impacts us, and these are the recommended changes we make. I think in Sacramento, they understand about the affordable housing crisis, or affordability of housing is a big issue. And I think over the years, they've heard about, you know, local control, local control, but sometimes they sort of put some on their heels because they can't necessarily always be defined based on who's saying it. So to answer your question specifically, yes, that is one of the principles and the foundations of maintaining local control. And I think with regards to what the bills would say is how it dictates exactly how we weigh in.
And usually, the bills are so lengthy, and, you know, you have to take a really deep dive into it. It almost requires an attorney to kind of know what to be looking for.
That's why you have us.
And to be careful about that. So a lot of us really have a really hard time kind of getting the different pros and cons, you know? And that's what I'd like to see, you know, with each bill that comes out. I don't know how this would work with our attorney's office, or the manager's office, or with you, Mr. Nicolau.
What we can do, what we like to do, I like to go into an office and say, hey, you've got assembly bill X, Y, Z. What is the intent? What are you trying to solve? And it's a formal, but it's a casual sit-down conversation. Then the staff or even the member, they explain, well, here's who the sponsors are, this is what the problem has brought your attention, this is why we're doing it. And I say, oh, that's, you know, that's a, respect your, what you're trying to do, that's great. On behalf of the city of Palo Alto, we would have these concerns because of X, Y, and Z. Are you open to amendments? And they'd say, more than likely, yes, we are. What are some of your suggestions? Well, this is why this would help us, or this is the negative impact that you might not have thought about, and just have an overall discussion. Happy to help do a matrix of some of the legislation and put in plain English what they're trying to do, or what they're seeking to do, and what it does. And I think working with the manager's office and the city attorney's office, that's something we could easily do. I do think it would be wise for us to identify a handful of bills that really impact us, so we're very focused and sharp and strategic, as opposed to weighing in on almost all of the bills. I think housing is probably the most important, so that's what we would do. I think second important would be transportation. And then kind of some of the auxiliary things would be like cap and trade, keep the city updated on what some of those discussions are. But my recommendation would be specific, targeted, you know, it's almost like you've got our three buckets. Work on, watch, monitor.
Work on.
I mean, don't quote me on that, but it'd be more of
Watch.
Action.
Monitor.
Monitor, watch, or something of that nature.
So how do you see that working out, Ed?
Well, I think what Nicolau is suggesting is to be strategic about how to attack the issues. And in particular, you know, recognizing, kind of starting at the foundational, local control is a foundational principle. At the same time, if that's the only position or perspective we have to offer, it's not likely that we can have much room for a conversation about what could work, and, you know, what would really be a significant concern for Palo Alto in particular. And so, as Nicolau described the calendar, once bills have been introduced, that will give us a point in time to be able to see what's being proposed, and what's the basic outline of the policy or the legislative direction that the author has brought forward. And Nicolau will give us some input as to the level of kind of how solid the proposal is versus, you know, to the extent that there are still significant discussions that are happening, where various stakeholders are lining up on the bills, and be able to give us some advice on where to be most effective. In some cases, it may be that we want to go visit with the author. In other cases, as, in fact, when speaking to the issue of working with partners, whether there are other cities that have similar concerns to our own, and that we go up as a coalition to express a particular perspective, and ideally, an alternative solution that could work for us better than, you know, simply saying we can't accept it. Because I think, starting off with just that position of we're opposed to a particular initiative, doesn't give the author much to work with beyond that.
So if it's just simply bad, if it's just simply bad, 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 you know, I mean
Then hopefully, everyone sees it that way. Yeah, I was gonna say that. If I may, through the mayor, councilmember, yeah, no, if it's simply, if it's just like a horrible bill, more likely it's me walking in that office going, you guys know you got a stinker, and they're like, no, we know. And sometimes we can be the lead, other times we can just pile on. It may be monitor, instead of actually actively opposing a bill. If, again, and this hypothetical may or may not be common, but, so, let's take a bill that is literally bad, and enough people are saying the same thing, that we don't actually need to spend a lot of time trying to oppose a bill that's not gonna go anywhere because lots of other folks have already reached the same conclusion. So that's a good scenario.
Thank you.
Most of them are a little more complicated, you know?
Yeah, so I think one of the things I really want to avoid is, you know, last year, they had SB 1333 that came out, that was removing, you know, charter cities' ability to govern their own
Yes.
...planning, land use, and transportation. Charter cities, obviously, we're charter cities for a reason, right? And we have this special constitutional, what's the word, constitutional?
Constitution.
Yeah. And then, you know, I mean, it came and went, and I guess I wasn't following it close enough, so I didn't even know about it. And so now, can you kind of tell me, what did we lose in that respect, you know, in terms of
To the best of my knowledge, we lost nothing, because I think it was in August or July, working with Ms. Dallor, we actually got amendments in that
Oh.
Once they accepted the city's amendments, and Palo Alto was covered.
So we just have to go with, you know, what the state is saying, which we are already following a lot of what state wants, but we still have retention of some of our land use and zoning laws?
Yes.
Okay.
And on that bill, I, how can I put it bluntly or politely? I think that the author's office was really trying to be helpful, and I think some of the language that they received from the sponsor, I don't know if they knew kind of the widespread impact on others. And once the amendments came out, Palo Alto was not by itself in having concerns, I recall.
I know hunting for fish.
Los Angeles and other cities were. And once we made our voice clear on what the impacts were, I think about two weeks later, they removed that language, so.
That's, okay, that's very reassuring to know. Another thing I wanted to find out, so, you know, I'm glad also that you kind of are matching the MTC's CASA compact elements with the bills that are being proposed, and I realize there's a lot of spot bills on there. But I think one of them that I would really like for you to kind of give us a little bit more details on is the CAs, you know, the ACA I, which has got to do with reducing the votes for taxes imposed on the, can you kind of give me a little bit more detail about that?
Yeah, I don't know the East, I don't know that bill inside and out, but anytime I see an ACA or SCA, that, so ACA is Assembly Constitutional Amendment. And so just rule of thumb is, any amendment to the Constitution needs two-thirds in both houses, and then go to a vote of the people. That's a high threshold.
So basically, what CASA is proposing to do is to reduce the threshold of our votes, of the voters' votes in order to, by making an amendment to the Constitution, so instead of a two-third vote, we can go to 51% or something like that, is that so?
That could be what that bill says specifically, I don't know offhand, but
And you'd be keeping an eye on that, right?
Absolutely, we'll add that.
Because that's money to our city.
What's the number of that one?
It was ACA I.
ACA I.
I think that was Assemblymember Aguirre Curry.
Yeah, it's Curry and Aguilera. But basically, you know, that's a lot of money that the city gets that's being mis, I want to say misappropriate, but it's being appropriated to somewhere else. So I would be very interested in keeping an eye on that one there. Another thing is, what is the legislation around opportunity zones? That's like the big thing out there, and I kind of want to know what all of that is.
I have heard, so again, remember, all proposals aren't yet final. I have heard, so last year, there's a trend that last year, the governor vetoed a handful of bills, and those authors are reintroducing the same bill. I have heard, one of the opportunity zone proposals would be to do some type of SEQA reform. If you're in an opportunity zone, and you're doing a certain type of construction or a certain size of construction, you'd have some type of streamlined judicial review if you have some type of environmental impacts. I've heard some other opportunity zone proposals being floated around, but I've not yet seen anything in writing. What I can do is add to the list of bills watching for the city, things on opportunity zones.
Opportunity zones, do the government also give these investors tax breaks and so forth to incentivize them to build or to do whatever it is? Is there housing in those opportunity zones?
I think housing is, but as you recall, so the opportunity zones came from when the federal government was making tax changes. And so each governor recommended certain opportunity zones based on census data and other data, and sent that to the federal government. And so not all of California's proposed opportunity zones were embraced. Some were accepted, some weren't.
Because I know San Jose is getting it, and San Francisco is also, Oakland is another city that is big into the opportunity zone discussions. But I just want to make sure that, you know, in these opportunity zones, if they're increasing jobs in those areas, this regional effort with housing, it means that they're spreading the housing requirements onto every other city, whether they're able to, whether they're, they have the capability of doing the housing or not. So that's another area that I think we should be very careful about, because all of this is unfunded mandates upon the city. And we have pensions and salaries and all the rest in order to, expenses.
Okay.
Huge expenses, right? So I just want to make sure that we're keeping an eye on that and updated on what these efforts are.
Tell me.
And of course, there's transportation also, you know. And why is Housing Committee and Transportation Committee separated?
On the record or off the record? I'm just kidding.
You know, they're not listening.
No. I think based on, so those agendas, those committee meetings, I mean, they'd go like four or five hours. And transportation's such a hot item, housing is such a hot item, the, what I heard was it made pragmatic sense to separate the two, because you could have, I mean, it's not fair to have a committee hearing for seven, eight hours where you're not really giving the full breadth and depth discussion on a policy topic. Also, because you're talking about in the Senate, they split transit and housing, I think if you also look over at the Assembly, they've had standalone housing committees, standalone transportation committees, so I think there's some uniformity there.
Well, hopefully, the left hand is talking to the right hand up there, you know? I mean, if they separate, I kind of get concerned that, you know, they're all operating in silos at that point, and that's the most fearful part.
They're still working at the same office. They all share cubicles, and they're still in the same location. But, yeah, so to your question, Senator Weiner is the Chair of Senate Transit, oh, sorry, Senate Housing, Senator Bell's the Chair of Senate Transit.
How far is, so where do you see SB 50 going? I'm sorry to take so much time, but there's so much up there going on, you know, I'm just reading
Please proceed.
From everything that's being thrown at us at the city.
No, absolutely, I mean, that's what we're here for. I see SB 50 going far. Senator Weiner is a very focused author. He cares greatly about transit and housing. I think we saw with, two years ago, with SB 35 being signed by the governor. So I think that's a thorough bill. I think he's gonna continue to push it. It's got a lot of support, it's got a lot of cosponsors on both the Senate side and the Assembly side. And I see that bill moving, moving through the process. I think that, that'd be one of the bills I would highlight, that with regards to the city and any concerns, it's something that we'd weigh in on with suggested amendments or suggested changes. I think that the, when the governor did his budget proposal on January 10th, he was, it was about a three, four-hour press conference, he even mentioned a couple times Senator Weiner, some of his housing proposals, and Assemblymember Chu and his housing proposals. So I know the governor, I mean, he spoke about it, so it's something that he's aware of.
So I hope that we're gonna be keeping an eye, or even doing a study session on SB 50 and what it does to our city, in terms of what, what kind of growth it will cause. But hopefully, you can help us, Nicolau, to, you know, work with it, and what you call it, work on, watch, and monitor.
Absolutely.
Right, yeah. So I think that's it. Let me see, I think that's it for now, but thank you so much for being here, and I look forward to more information.
My pleasure, absolutely. I think these work sessions are really helpful, so I thank the city manager for getting this set up. So I might, just in response to the last comment, Mayor, members of the council, I think we do want to think through how best to engage as a council. Use SB 50, it's probably the best example for one that the council will want to track and be engaged at the most effective means. There are likely to be ongoing conversations among cities. We know that Santa Clara Cities Association, as well as other cities, groups will be talking about SB 50 in particular. So how best to connect those venues for discussion with the city position and instructions both to our lobbyists, as well as identifying when and who should go to Sacramento to participate directly in conversations with our legislative offices? I think are the kinds of issues we'll want to try to provide some calendar to and set some predictability for you.
Councilmember Cormac, to be followed by Councilman, Vice Mayor Fine.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Seth. Mr. DeLuca, it's a pleasure to meet you. Thank you for being here. You have an important role, which I know you know. Thank you to Councilmember Koo for going over the beginning of CASA, won't dwell on that too much. I think item element nine, though, with respect to funding, would be another one to pay attention to. It's a little bit shocking to read diversion of property taxes, so just from a finance standpoint, I would add that to your list of things to do more than watch.
Okay.
I thought perhaps we would just share with you the four priorities, if, in case the city manager hasn't already, that we identified on Saturday. Grade separations, I'll come back to that. Transportation and traffic, budget, and climate. Let me just touch on both of those briefly, just so you have a sense of the things that we all want to work on this year. Grade separations, I'll leave for the last, because unfortunately, we didn't have the opportunity to discuss the letter you sent last time, which I know also will involve coming to Sacramento and significant participation. So we'd be remiss not to spend a chunk of time on that. Transportation and traffic, you know, I think we're at the beginning stages of what that looks like for us, but with the changes we foresee in terms of our own housing, anything that Stanford might do as a result of the general use permit, I think there's a significant amount of work to be done in that area. With respect to the budget, of course, pensions is always on our list, and we'll be making, hopefully, some changes to our operating budget going forward to accommodate for that. With respect to climate, again, I think we're in the early stages, but we do have a sustainability impact plan that we can, we can share with you. So anything in respect to electrification of utilities, vehicles, et cetera, would be, I think, of interest to most of us. On grade separations, we did have a very helpful letter from you a few weeks ago in our packet, but we didn't have the opportunity to discuss it. It does feel like the time is now, or perhaps yesterday, to begin working on that. So love any thoughts you would have, a little bit more color on the grade separations.
Absolutely. With regard to the grade separation, yeah, that's when I came down, and there was the, was gonna present, but there was the fire alarm. The, the way that we look at grade separation is, it'd be, so that a lot of different folks have their hands involved, Caltrans, CTC, and others, with the reauthorization of SB I that enhance some of the grade separation funding, which is good. I think it's helpful to tell the Palo Alto story. Come up to Sacramento, you know, maybe it's the mayor, city manager, staff, brief CTC staff, Caltrans staff, this is what the city of Palo Alto is working on. I know that you've got an item on your agenda with regards to Stanford, there could be ways to discuss community partnerships with other folks trying to help out, and say, this is what we're looking for, this is a price tag of what we've been doing, you know, obviously, know us, keep us in mind, and then once we start getting closer to applying, then we submit the application. Something our firm likes to do is, we like to, through our work on the front end, build up funding applications. No agency should be surprised by something that they see us submit, they should be looking forward to it, and that's something that we would recommend on grade separation. Similar to whether it's housing policy or other policy, I think a regional approach on grade separation would be helpful. So it's not just Palo Alto asking for some of the funding, it's your neighboring cities and doing it in partnership. Obviously, that could drop a dollar amount, but also makes a request more palatable because the money's being spread out in the region.
Great, thank you.
Also, on grade separation, would highlight all the work that you all have been doing, with your consultant, different designs, different community meetings, things of that nature.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much for joining us again. Couple quick questions. So one, do you want to echo Councilmember Cormac on SB 5 and AB 11? The revenue set-asides are clearly concerning to any city in California, but it would be nice to understand what kind of proposals you think would be appropriate amendments to that. You know, I think part of the reason this is called the CASA compact is, it's a balance of different items, and they're trying to get all of it done. So there may be parts we like, there may be parts we don't like, but if we can try to improve some of those, that's helpful. Do AB 11 and SB 5 also touch on redevelopment stuff?
Not that I recall. The AB 11 isn't on the, I don't recall that as being one of his redevelopment bills, though he does have a redevelopment bill. It's interesting, because we kept hearing last year, redevelopment 2.0, redevelopment 2.0. And Assemblymember Chu had a bill last year, which is more kind of like the sustainable communities way of addressing it. But then, when the governor did his January budget release, he said clearly, he's like, I'm not a believer in redevelopment, though I think the enhanced infrastructure financing districts, EIFDs, would be a good way to do it. And he proposed lowering that voter threshold. So, you know, I recall last year, and this time last year, we kept hearing, okay, ramp up, redevelopment 2.0, but it seems like that's fizzled a bit right now. However, back to my first statement, we're at mile three. However, back to my first statement, we're at mile three. We've got 26.2 more to go, so things could change in between.
Okay. If there are kind of enhanced infrastructure-like tax financing mechanisms that come up, I think we'd probably be interested in hearing about those. Question, do you know anything about AB 3059 congestion pricing?
No, I have not read about that.
Okay.
That specific language.
So I'm just kind of interested. I think it's so far being proposed just for the largest cities like LA, San Diego, San Francisco. But I've certainly heard from community members here in Palo Alto think, you know, the only way we're going to solve traffic is by charging for it.
Okay.
So that might be something to keep an eye on. I think those are my questions for now. Obviously, I think we're all interested in the corresponding legislation for CASA, and we probably fall on different sides of it, but interested to keep on hearing updates from you as you see them coming through, and on each of those, you know, where we can be best positioned to influence.
Perfect. And I know you all have, I'm sure, great lines of communication with Assemblymember Berman. Saw him Thursday night, we were talking about, you know, kind of in general, the overview of CASA, and he said he's heard from a lot of his cities. I think at first, it was more of like, people are hearing about this, what is it? What does it mean? What can we look at? So he said to me, he's like, hey, help me out, you know, make sure whatever Palo Alto's looking for, we're clear, we're concise, we know what we're asking for, we're looking at something very focused. And I said, yeah, absolutely. Because that's also part of what our role is, is to help make your lives easier, but also the lives of, you know, Senator Hill, Assemblymember Berman, making sure it's clear what our asks are, so they can then go to the author or what have you and help push what we're looking for.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple, couple other questions. So I think that the grade separation is quite important, and it's timely for that. I want to go back on a couple of the CASA and SB 50 things. So, yeah, sorry. I want to, I want to ask you on your chart, so, thank you, this is very helpful. So SB 827 last year failed to get out of committee.
Correct.
Where on this chart did it stall?
The first committee.
Okay, so box number, box number two.
Yes, yellow box number two.
Okay.
Where it was introduced, and then it went to its first committee hearing, and it was held in committee.
Okay. Right, so it was drafted and introduced and went to committee. Okay, that's helpful, thank you. I didn't see, so the governor also made some proposals regarding, you know, particularly housing, and to some extent, transportation, right, as part of his budget dialogue. Are any of those, I mean, are there, are any, he made some different proposals than appear in CASA, for example. Are there, are any of those on this list?
Those aren't on that list yet, because, so we're waiting for, those are going to be called budget trailer bills, where he's got his proposals, and there's, it's going to be further fleshed out. He did make, he mentioned when he made his budget proposal, he sees housing and transportation as the same thing interlinked. He made a proposal about redoing RENA, and he also talked about tying SB 1 funds to RENA numbers. I know that's caused a lot of concern from people. We were in a briefing about two weeks ago where his senior staff from the Department of Finance said, hey, yes, this is something the governor believes in very passionately, he knows housing policy really well, but just so you all are aware, we're talking about RENA going forward, and if there are funds attached, it would maybe be putting your money in an escrow account if you're not meeting certain numbers, but it'd be going forward, not retroactive.
So, so for the, the governor's proposals would be budget trailer bills, and do they follow the same timeline as?
Great question. No, they do not. So that's part of the budget process.
Okay.
So once the budget bills start getting heard, that's more expedited, that's January, budget's got to be approved by June 15th. So we've got the legislative process, which will take us through September, then we've got the budget process that's going to take us through June. So the budget process, when it comes to legislation, is a lot more, it's a lot faster.
I was gonna, but because, I mean, some of the, some of the stuff that the governor talked about as part of the budget process really looks kind of like legislative stuff, right? So, I mean, how does that all, how does that mesh?
It's a, it's a fine dance that's, at times, choreographed really well, and other times it's not.
Okay.
Years past, when Governor Brown would put forward some policy changes in the budget, I recall both the Assembly budget and Senate budget would always say, this isn't budget-related, this is kind of thick policy. Is this really something that we should be talking about? And so at times, it's a normal push and pull between the executive and the legislative branches.
I mean, it's an interesting, it's an interesting nexus here, because, you know, MTC and Scott Weiner and so forth have made some, some proposals on how to address some of these issues. The government made, the governor made some remarks about how to address these issues, and they look like they sort of go, to some extent, in different directions.
You think so? I think some are sort of interconnected.
Yeah.
I think the redevelopment, that was a bit of a surprise when the governor was like, well, I'm not really a big fan of the redevelopment, and my words not his. I was like, okay, I didn't see that.
Well, I mean, if you look at, for example, the funding, so CASA said, let's go after, you know, existing, existing, existing buckets of tax money in cities, and the governor called for new buckets, right? CASA said, you know, let's go over, let's go after communities and taxpayers, right? The governor said, let's go over, let's go after tech companies, right? So that's one difference. Another one was, well, what happens for cities and jurisdictions deemed to be sort of not, not doing, not where they're supposed to be? Well, the governor's proposal was, let's go after them with fiscal, you know, fiscal pol, fiscal, you know, constraints. You know, CASA, MTC, SB 50, go after them, you know, let's take away your zone, let's abrogate the, you know, who owns the zoning. Those are, those are very, very different directions. So how does that all get resolved? I mean, do they do both? Do they do neither? Do they, you know, horse trade? I mean, how does that all work?
In years past, you would have around May, the governor would meet with, it was the big five, so it was the governor, the majority and minority leader of the Senate, the majority and minority leader of the Assembly, and they'd essentially would get together and talk about, okay, this is where the budget's going, what are you, what can you live with, what can't you, is this going to be taken out, be legislation the next couple of months? I make this as somewhat of a joke, I mean, there's no longer a majority minority party because it's all, pretty much all Democrat. And so that's what they've done in years past. We're all, we're waiting to see with this new governor, the new administration, what is this going to look like? He has kept a lot of staff from last administration and a lot of senior staff in the main agencies, so we suspect there will be discussions, probably heating up a bit more, April, May, of, okay, this is going to be part of the budget, and then this over here is going to be more legislation, it's got to work through the legislative process. I, I think you have a good point, the, the tax are different, it's zoning or financially. The governor was also clear when he made his budget proposal, there's a surplus, and he even said, you know, we've been, over the years, it's been stick, 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 now let's try to do some carrots. So it'd be money set aside for cities, if you're meeting your certain goals, your certain numbers, there's a pool of funds that you can access, it'd almost be part of your general fund that's got not too many strings attached, and it's got some flexibility, which I think people appreciate as opposed to constantly being beaten up or bashed. You know, we'll see kind of where that goes and how that heads. What's helpful, good indicator, is in the budget subcommittee hearings, depending on certain topics, hearing where the different Assemblymembers and Senators are to kind of telegraph what they plan to do. But as of right now, the governor, there's not been really many changes from his January 10th proposal. Looking forward to reading through the trailer bills to see more of the kind of detail as to what that's going to be and what that's going to look like, and then the discussions following that.
So when do we start seeing budget trailer bills?
Relatively soon. I think they might have actually come out this weekend. I need to actually read up on that.
Okay. Thanks, that's very helpful. So next, we're going to go to Councilmember DuBois, and after that, Councilmember Tanaka. And Councilmember DuBois is on the phone.
Yeah, good to see you on. Appreciate you calling, hope you can understand me.
Convenance.
So, we've talked a lot about CASA tonight. I'm curious to get some feedback. You know, we talked about, you know, supporting the changes versus opposition. How do you think regional opposition would be viewed? You know, I know there's concern about the funding. Do you think it'd be helpful to get letters signed by multiple base area cities?
Absolutely, absolutely. I think when, when weighing in regional letters, coalition letters are always very, very helpful.
And kind of similar question, what do you think about kind of a regional visit to Sacramento?
I think that's a great idea. I think there's a fine number between having enough people in the meeting where you can get your points across versus, you know, having 15 people in a crowded meeting and everyone's kind of talking over each other, which obviously would be handled ahead of time. But I, I think if you get very, various cities all together saying the same thing, working in coalition, these are our suggestions, this is what concerns us, this is how we would fix it, let's work together, I think that's a very effective tool.
Okay. And some of the specific things in CASA, on, on the ADU changes, are they, you know, they're talking about things that go beyond what Palo Alto's already done?
I'm sorry, I missed that last part. You said on ADUs, if it was?
If it went beyond what the changes at Palo Alto made, which I think went beyond the state laws.
I, I'm under the impression, one of the ADU bills from Senator Wykowski still needs to be, there needs to be more detail on that, but I was under the impression it's moving forward, and they're not trying to redo what others have done. The big thing I'm hearing on ADU really is about fees and possible fee waivers and kind of where utilities and where the schools are. That's what I'm hearing right now on ADUs. I think, I'm surprised with more and more cities being supportive of ADUs, surprises because I didn't know how much support was really out there. I'm hearing ADUs are real, it helps, it's thorough, people are supportive of that, it's just the question is, what does it do? Is it streamlined? And then what about the fees?
Yeah, I mean, I do think some of the fees, you know, we are adding more people to the community, and we need to make sure that we're still covering impacts, city services and things. So again, it comes, comes down to funding and the details, what exactly is being discussed. On the, I think they're also, are they also including on the renter protection side, some of the kind of anti-gouging discussion on price increases, rent increases?
There is part of the compact, I think, one of the spot bills is AB 36 from Bloom about rent caps. I've heard different numbers, it was like CPI plus 5%. There's also some tenant rental assistance proposals, that's SB 18, which is actually, it came out before the CASA compact, it was something Senator Skinner wanted to do to help address homelessness. She was seen in her region, rental assistance to keep people in their houses as opposed to something happens, they hit the streets. So, but yeah, I am eager to see the, the language on the rent cap, and then eager to see the language on AB 36, which is from Bloom, which ties into kind of rental assistance and the rent cap.
Yeah. So again, that, that may be one, my colleagues and I'd be willing to support if it was really around kind of price gouging, and again, the language on these are going to be critical to understand. On the homeless funding program, you know if there'll be any dollars in there for vehicle dwelling assistance?
For vehicle dwellings, as in sleeping in your cars, I have not heard about funding for it. I have heard that there could be a couple of bills coming to kind of soften the stance on that, to allow for people to be sleeping in their cars. I have seen that some cities have been allowing RV parking, mobile home parking, or RV parking in certain parking lots, that they designate, there's rules who can come, who can go, what times would have you, and they were trying to use some of their heap funds for that. I have not heard that those, that requests, I have not heard that those requests were rejected. In fact, the state just put out a press release that all the heap funding, remember that was a $500 million from last year's budget, has been dispersed to cities. So with regards to, to answer your question directly, I've not seen any bills about funding for people to sleep in their cars, but I have heard of cities using some of their heap funds to support RV parking to address homelessness.
Yeah, so some of this new, the $500 million in homeless funds, I mean, it'd be, it'd be great if some of that could be used for those kinds of management programs for RVs and things. You know, there's the nonprofit, the area that Palo Alto is using, it's not well-funded, you know, and if we wanted to scan that program and get Palo Alto some state funding there, it'd be a big help, I think. And then on the CASA transit definition, you know, again, in terms of kind of important changes, I think the definition of what really practical transit is needs to be defined. You know, we have a lot of transitions that don't match up on schedule, they're not really effective if you need to make transfers. So, you know, I'm particularly concerned that, you know, some of the CASA laws change things based on transit being available, but the transit's not really practical. And I think Councilmember Philson touched on CASA funding, you know, there was a recent announcement of $500 million from some of the tech companies, and it would be nice if the message was delivered to Sacramento that it's a nice start, but it's not nearly enough, and it would be good to see some discussion about meaningful funding from the business community, and not just focusing on the property tax. I think we've talked about grade steps multiple times, so again, looking for dollars in new legislation that would provide more funding to grade steps for High Street Rail and for the Peninsula in general. And then I had a, my last question's really around sea level rise. And do you see any, is there any new legislation for funding of, you know, protecting utility infrastructure due to sea level rise?
I suspect in the upcoming cap and trade negotiations, sea level rise will be more of a prominent issue. I think it's catching on a lot more. In fact, I'm hearing now when it comes to major development projects, a couple of committee staffers I talk to, they're even following the idea of sea level rise is almost like a standalone in any development project that's over a certain dollar amount, how are you going to address it, incorporate it? I will keep my eyes peeled on any funding specifically for sea level rise, but I suspect in the cap and trade negotiations, that's going to be a big part, that's a big element.
So just a quick comment to my colleagues, you know, I think it's critical that the council speak with one voice, so, you know, if we're split on some positions, I think we may want to take some votes, because we send people to Sacramento, you know, we're representing the council position. And I also think we should consider maybe a joint trip, a multi-city trip on, on CASA and on grade steps. I think we could talk about other Palo Alto issues, you know, just the Palo Alto delegation, but we might want to think about coordinating a kind of a multi-city delegation for those other topics. Thanks.
Thanks. Councilmember Tanaka.
Thank you for your work on, you know, looking out for the interest of Palo Alto. Most of what I was thinking about has been asked already, so I'm not going to repeat that, but just was wondering if you knew for our neighboring cities, like, you know, along the rail corridor, how many of them have gotten funding from the state? Do you know, like?
I don't know. I can, I can happily check that out, I don't know. One of the things-
I've heard, I think it was Burlingame, or I forgot which city it was. Which one was it? So I forgot which one it was, but it got like almost all of their funding from the state, or from outside the city. And I'm just wondering, I mean, however we do it, I think that would be a good thing for us as well, it's going to be expensive, we have four grade separations to deal with at least. And so I would be interested in knowing how much has other cities gone, and how do they get it? And what we, what we could do to get our, our fair share, so to speak? Because no matter what we do, it's going to be pretty expensive, and we could use all the help we can get. So have you been following this much at all?
I can, I can definitely check that out on other cities. When the grade separation funding first came out, I think it was Prop 1, A, 1B? One of the main drivers was goods movement. I mean, that's what they really were looking at grade separation funding for, goods movement, goods movement, goods movement. And then, you know, it's taken a while, I mean, these are huge projects, so they get funding for one round or a second round, and now we're kind of transitioning more away from the goods movement, more to impacts that you all are seeing.
Well, you know, Palo Alto has probably, I think, the second busiest station after Fourth and King, and, you know, it's, it's been a big driver in the region, and, you know, everyone's complaining about transportation issues and traffic problems and parking problems, and, you know, certainly doing the grade separation would help that. So, you know, just we love your diligence on this to figure out how much do other cities get, how do they get it, and what we could do to get our share, and if you could lobby for our share, that would be great. And I think all my colleagues probably unanimously support that.
Well, I think to put it in some context, I would be remiss if I didn't reiterate some of what Nicolao pointed out, that we really can't go it alone. Paying a visit to Sacramento, and grade separations are probably the poster child issue, that if we were to go to Sacramento with our ask- if we were to go to Sacramento with our ask today, it would really not be very effective. That there's a context of what other cities are doing along the rail corridor that are arguably in competition with our requests and that are also better positioned with respect to clarity of both the dollar being asked for, the scope of what is being proposed, and the readiness of a project to be delivered. And I think those are all very common decades-old expectations of the, whether they be regulators or legislators in Sacramento, as to what reasonable ask or successful requests are likely to consist of. So really important for us to not come away from this with the expectation that we will be lining up our requests and Nicolo's going to deliver. The reality is that in many cases, the asks need to be put in the right context and they need to be ready, quite frankly, to be presented not only alone via the City of Palo Alto, but in coordination and ideally in partnership with both other cities and other partners that will be participating financially in the request.
Councilmember Coop.
I just want to also acknowledge that Nicolo, you did put together a blow-by-bull on how to advocate for funding, et cetera. So that's something that we should start looking at also, you know, what Nicolo had suggested on how to go get funding from the state and all the other agencies. That was a very interesting one that you put together for us, and I thought that was pretty thorough. So I want to acknowledge and thank you for that. And then also, Ed, I was wondering if we might want to schedule a CASA compact for MTC to come and present and invite other cities to come? I know on the East Bay, Fremont, and a few other cities had jointly had MTC come and present to them. Unfortunately, I had something else that night, I couldn't go, but it would certainly be good for our side of the bay also to invite some other cities to kind of hear what MTC has to present on the CASA compact. I mean, it's after the fact now, you know, we should have been engaged about 16 months ago, but, you know, it'd still be good for the residents and other council members from here, as well as from other cities, to have a presentation, just to know what we're up against or what we're up for.
I can jump in just on that, it was Hayward, San Leandro, and Fremont, they essentially said, where have you all been? And so I don't think it's a Palo Alto-specific issue, I think it's cities across the bay who are like, hey, we weren't included.
Yeah.
The feedback I got that it was helpful, I think people acknowledged the housing issue, it was helpful to hear from MTC, but I just want to kind of color it that way, that they were saying, what about us? Because I think that's what a lot of cities have been saying.
What about us, as in you didn't come and consult with us, or?
As I, without being there, that's what I understand, they were, yeah.
So do you think it's a worthwhile, I think it's a worthwhile thing to have MTC come now and kind of talk a little bit more, so at least people around here know about this.
I think it's an open question, you know, MTC has been rightly or wrongly something of a lightning rod for the topic at this point. The actions moved to the legislative, which is arguably really more relevant than MTC's at this point in the discussion. So certainly something we can discuss and decide whether it's trying to host one either here in Palo Alto, whether it's a cities association, what's the right scope of any type of community conversation that helps advance both awareness as well as engagement on the issues.
I'm assuming that a lot of the MTC people would, are just ready to see the back of this thing, and then some, right? By now.
Well, from what I've heard, the more recent MTC A-BAG conversations, I think conversation's probably too polite a term for what they are at this point. It's more just people talking at each other, and quite frankly, I don't know that it's really productive. So it may be more productive to focus on where's the action, the real action, to the extent that it results in legislative action, to focus our energy. You know, some of the elements maybe are not going to move, so let's not focus on the dimensions that are not going to go anywhere, focus on the ones that are and how best to influence the outcome.
So two more questions then on this area, and one is on that topic. So I went to the last MTC A-BAG meeting with a few other people, and, you know, what I heard from the MTC, you know, what I recall, okay, was, you know, there was an awful lot of, gee, we got a serious problem here, we don't know what to do, so let's try this, right? And is that, I mean, is that feeling also common in Sacramento, right? I mean, or is there a different perspective on this?
What I'm hearing consistently is, yes, there is a problem, and we tip our cap to MTC A-BAG, the CASA organizations, for helping drive this conversation and trying to look at this as a package deal. I've also, you know, if you think about this, it's a huge topic, there's 120 legislators, there's one governor, there's many other folks impacted by this, so there's going to, now kind of the cross wiring is happening. But I think that the overall summary is, you know what, sausage making is probably a better way of saying it, by effort, hey, you know what, this is a huge issue, thank you for bringing it up, semicolon, not everyone was engaged. But like City Manager said, now it's in the legislative arena, so it's okay, now we can actually see a bill in print, three pages, 40 pages, 50 pages, we can comment line by line. And this isn't something that I don't think is going to go away. Also, we're in the first year of a two-year bill cycle. As you recall, you know, bills get held over till the next year. From the legislators I've talked to, there's a lot of support for the overall themes of CASA because the issue is big. There's also discussion of this needs to move as a package. You know, one bill by itself isn't as powerful as 10 bills together. That remains to be seen, as I said, mile three, 26.2 to the end of the race.
The last two, the last point two is for real, too. Okay. Seeing no further lights, is there public comment on this topic? Do we have any cards? Seeing no more. Thank you, yeah. Tom on the phone?
Yeah, just one last question. I'm curious if you're seeing any support at the state level for city-owned fiber utilities or fiber to the home?
I have not seen that yet, I haven't necessarily had my ears open to it, I will look a little bit harder now. But you're saying, so city-owned fiber?
Well, we're also considering it's part of a smart metering program.
Oh, okay.
So it could be fiber to the neighborhood, fiber to the home, or fiber networks to support utilities in smart cities.
Okay. I will add that to our list.
And with that, Nicolo, thank you very much for joining us again, thanks for coming over here, always a pleasure, and we look forward to continuing this dialogue in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you very much, I appreciate everyone's time, and thank you for the City Manager for sending it up, so thank you.
With that, we are a little bit ahead of schedule, which is not at all entirely a bad thing. So I think we'll move on to agenda changes, additions, and deletions.
Let's see, Mr. Mayor, I don't think we've got any recommended changes to your agenda. I would note that if we go straightforward, we'll hit oral communications early, which might be a bit of a concern for folks who think we might not start that until 6:40. So if it were the pleasure of the council, you might want to move to your consent calendar and then come back to oral communications, at least by a few minutes.
Let's see, I don't think there's anything controversial on the consent calendar. We could do that. We could also, you know, we are a little bit early on oral communication, or almost a little bit early, we were very timely on oral communications last time. Are we allowed to sort of take up the first action item and then do more oral communications after that if people have come in?
You have wide discretion to change your agenda around, and we do have some language that posted agenda times are estimates only and that matters could move up or back. That said, you know, there is the possibility that people may have acted based on them. So I think what you're suggesting is to take oral communications and then move on, and then if there are, you could take a second period of oral communications, that is permissible, yes.
Okay. I like the idea of going to the consent calendar, okay, so why don't we do that? What about City Manager comments? Do you want to do that now or later?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready. Okay, very good. Thank you. Do have one slide to share with you, we've got a couple of items related to ongoing construction and one additional item. So be quick, first, not related to what you see on your screen, their upgrade downtown project, our utility project, or at least the utilities being the first phase of a multi-phase project downtown. With respect to the ongoing work on University Avenue, we would like to note for the council that we're entering the final stages. We are working on the last block now, which will be the block between university, or on University between High and the ramps to and from Alma Street. So that last piece will begin construction either later this week or first of next week, depending on weather and contractor progress based on that. There is traffic control that will be necessary, as you would imagine, working on the ramps to and from Alma, or what is on the university side of those ramps, will present some challenges to motorists. So as a result, there's additional signage and additional detours that will be provided. There are detailed maps of lane closure and detours that are on the city's website, and the word is going out as we speak. The website, for those who are looking for that information, is upgradedowntownpa.com. And we'll also be doing our typical email updates and blasts. We also have a dedicated hotline where city staff will be available to answer questions and address any concerns, again, for motors, just in this final segment of construction. The major utility infrastructure is expected to be completed by the end of next month, and after which, University Avenue will be getting its refresh on paving, paving, once weather conditions allow it. Second related, oops, sorry, back to that photo, I don't know if...
Ah, I know what that is.
If the city clerk mentioned that we were having some issues with projector, so we weren't sure it was going to be operable tonight, but thankfully, two staff were able to get the projector and lamp replaced. So in any case, the photo you see is our Baylands Boardwalk, and Public Works staff excited to announce that the Baylands Boardwalk is actually now open. It's not open in that condition, it's now been completed and available for the public to experience panoramic views of the bay. The construction finished last Thursday, and again, is now open to the public, was the original boardwalk was built in 1969 and all, but the first 200 feet of the boardwalk was closed for safety reasons in 2014. Project to rebuild the boardwalk hit the ground running last year, and, let's see, the new boardwalk is using Alaskan yellow cedar beams, a natural, more rot-resistant material, and redwood for post railing and decking. And opening event is being calendared. Let's see, and finally, just a note on your consent calendar, that as a part of the consent calendar, you've got receipt of a generous million-dollar donation from the Lenore C. Terry 2014 Living Trust to Palo Alto Animal Services. Wanted to note that pending the council's approval, or in anticipation of the council's approval, Mayor has signed a letter on behalf of the council to the family expressing our gratitude, and we're also arranging for direct thank you for that very generous gift. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. With that, I want to note that Councilmember Niss has joined us. And with that, let's move on to the consent calendar. Are there any no votes anticipated on the consent calendar? Did we lose somebody? We lost... I'm loath to actually take a vote without Greg here.
Do you have a motion?
But maybe we could have a motion.
I'll move the consent calendar.
And I will second. Care to speak to your motion? I don't think I'll speak. So we have a motion on the floor to approve the consent calendar, before we do that, are there any no votes? Seeing none, would you vote on the board, please? And that passes. Tom?
Tom votes yes.
Got to remember to do that. Tom, yeah, if we miss it, you know, shout or something like that, so.
I think we skipped a minute.
Did we? Yes, we probably did. So can I have a motion to approve, I will move to approve the minutes. Would you vote on the board, please?
I vote yes.
So that also passes unanimously. With that, we will move to oral communications. Do we have any speakers? We have so far three. And so you'll have three minutes, and the first speaker is Dennis Backland.
Good evening, Mayor Phil Seth and council members. I'm Dennis Backland. I was born in Palo Alto on a rainy February day, like today, in 1942, and I've lived in Palo Alto for 77 years now. From 2000 to 2014, I served in the planning department as the city's historic preservation planner, working every week to try to preserve the historic character of our city. And I believe that we had many successes during those years to provide that protection. For 38 years, that is half of my lifetime, I've lived at the hotel president apartments, where, along with other tenants, I am facing eviction from my long-term home. The first thing I want to speak about tonight is to thank profoundly City Manager Chikada for his letter informing the hotel president-owner, AJ Capital Partners, that one-year leases for the remaining president tenants will be required and enforced. As we know, AJ Capital has responded that they refuse to comply with the requirement for one-year leases, and that they will expel the tenants from the president on March 1st. We tenants will be anxiously awaiting City Manager Chikada's response to AJ Capital's refusal to comply with the one-year lease law. I myself am disabled, must use a walker, and have no car. I simply cannot lose my apartment at this time during the rainy season, because when it rains, I cannot go out unless, like tonight, I'm accompanied by another person to keep me from falling on wet pavement. Again, my thanks to City Manager Chikada for his ruling on the one-year leases. Next, I want council to know briefly something I will bring up more next week, why we feel it is appropriate for us to keep coming to the city for help in our situation at the president. And it is painful for me to say that the reason is because the city, I am afraid, created the problem, specifically when AJ Capital came before they bought the building to the interim planning director. And if he had said, hold off a day or so, we will check with the city attorney, the municipal code, they would have found the prohibition of a commercial hotel. AJ Capital, having not bought the building, would simply have quietly left Palo Alto. Capital, having not bought the building, would simply have quietly left Palo Alto, and our homes would have been protected for the rest of our lives. So that is what happened. I can elaborate more on this on another time, but we do continue to look for your help, and we'll spell this out more clearly next time. Thank you very much, and it was delightful to see the council members again, and I'm so glad to see council member Niss again tonight. I was fearing I might miss you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Karen Gao.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. This time I have a prepared script. I would like to thank you for writing an official letter reminding the landlords, A.J. Capital, to reconsider their eviction move-out deadline. Unfortunately, the letter was dated January 29th. On January 27th, I moved out, so I cannot be involved with the extension of the year I wish the letter had come out November, so that it could benefit 90% of the tenants. So right now, 90% of the tenants have moved out. The remaining 10 hopefully will be affected by this letter at the 23rd hour. So unfortunately, this is rather late for me and many others who have moved or are already in the process of and have given deposits for new apartments elsewhere. I still thank you. I do thank you for recognizing the need to send this letter by Ed Chikada, city manager. I also appreciate the city attorney taking an active step to clarify the city's understanding of this Palo Alto 9.68.030 and 4040, understanding of the one-year lease issues and their enforcements. I am hoping that the city will continue to pursue this line of action and enforcement actions and apply fines. I'm here on behalf of my colleagues at the president. I implore you to hear their entreaty. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Next will be Rita Verhill.
Good evening. I wanted to thank you all, particularly Mayor Phil Seth, for really a delightful, inclusive, open, and thoroughly enjoyable retreat. Everyone got to say what they wanted to say. Everybody was polite to each other, and I personally appreciate it. I wanted to say that I was glad that climate change came up and is a goal for the city. This would include things like no more bulldozing of houses, but salvage, salvage everything, sell it, there's somebody who will buy it. So many bungalows are built of, what's it called, clear heart redwood, which you can't even buy anymore. There was a garage on Lincoln tongue and groove clear heart redwood that was bulldozed and thrown away. Also, it would include finally going after and getting rid of all these awful gas-blown leaf blowers, gas-driven leaf blowers, and we could get rid of the gas-driven lawnmowers. We could also take better interest and care of our groundwater and start looking at what buildings are being built in areas that we can reasonably expect to have sea level rise within a very few years. So I think, and we can do anti-idling, and we can, I'm very excited about this. I did want to mention, however, that I think the city council really does need to work to regain, not improve, regain, reestablish the citizens' trust and their respect. What has happened with the president hotel, what happened at the PTC last week, what's happened with residents being asked to pay more and more taxes for garages, which are then bonded by the city council, and thereby doubling the cost per newspaper report, have really eroded our trust in the city council and also in city staff. So I'm hoping that with a new mayor and with a new council, that trust can be reestablished, respect can be regained, and we can all move forward to work together. I hope that the city will reach out to residents like myself, who are more than willing to help weed a park, or trim trees, or do other things that I feel citizens can do to show their love of where they live. Thank you.
Thank you. Ikbal Sarang.
Good evening, Mayor Phil Seth, Vice Mayor Fine, council members, and city manager Chikada, and city attorney Molly Stump as well. Thank you very much for a very strong letter that you drafted and sent to A.J. Capital at the hotel president. I am a resident of the hotel president for the last 28-plus years. I appreciate the active involvement of the city, pointing out the city ordinance being neglected, being put aside, and affecting us tenants. As previous speakers have spoken on the subject, I agree that it does make a difference. It makes a difference now, even with a few people there, because it sets a precedent. It is important for the city. It is also important for us individuals who are still there, and I hope the city can follow through with the responses and the approach and the stance that is being taken by the landlord. The landlord has responded already to that letter, saying that it's all bunk, or does not agree with it at all, and is proceeding with their plans of removing us from our homes. Once again, I thank you, and I am extremely, extremely happy that you have done that, and we appreciate it. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Mary Sylvester.
Good evening, Mayor Phil Seth and Vice Mayor Adrienne Fine and council members. First of all, like Rita Verhill, I'd like to acknowledge all of you for Saturday's retreat. I thought it was a great experience in civic engagement. This is the third retreat I've attended, and I want to acknowledge the civility and respect you each showed one another, as well as the public. It was very much appreciated. Despite the cynicism of comments on Palo Alto Online, I appreciate that the city's going to have a climate action plan and enforce its sustainability plan of 2016. Being a neighbor of Churchill and Alma, I appreciate graded separations being an ongoing priority, as well as transportation and traffic. I'm very glad that fiscal sustainability is a priority. I would like to see the business tax implemented this year. I also want to acknowledge council member Koo for her comments on regaining public trust, civic engagement, and transparency. I do agree that this is an important area, both for council as well as staff. In my own limited experience, I am very appreciative to all of you who have come out to my neighborhood to speak with neighbors. It's gotten people engaged and involved, so it's invaluable. And I believe that city manager Chikada wants to be working on this, and I think it's a terrific idea. I'd love to see youth involved, how to get youth, middle school and high schoolers, involved. I do have a few comments on the president hotel. Thank you to city manager Chikada for writing his letter on January 29th to enforce the lease requirement. I am deeply concerned and offended by how A.J. Capital has treated this community, city staff, tenants, council. The disrespect that's shown to tenants is unacceptable. I'd like to know how much has city staff expended in the way of cost trying to evaluate this project? And then lastly, the discussion of the waiver at the PTC meeting last Tuesday was noteworthy. The issue of transparency came out loud and clear. Residents want to know why this waiver was floated. However, we are very glad that it's not going to be enforced as to the president hotel. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have one more? Okay. If we have another speaker of oral communications, we'll do that. Otherwise, we'll move on. Seeing no further oral communications at this time, we will move on to our first action item, which is a discussion of a potential letter to staff, from staff, and the council, I suppose, to the Santa Clara County Planning Department regarding the Stanford GOP. I think it is. I think it's from us, but yeah, I think it's, yeah.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, city council. Jonathan Late, interim director for the planning department. Here to present, or actually ask the councils to have a discussion and provide direction to staff on items that you might like to see included in a letter that we would send to the county board of supervisors and county staff as they begin to negotiate with Stanford on their general use permit application. Just by way of background, the council and the community may be aware that, what was it, 2017? In 2017, Stanford had filed for a general use permit amendment, and more recently, last year, that application was supplemented with a development agreement application, which was reviewed by county staff, and there was some public hearings regarding that. Since then, the county board of supervisors have asked potentially impacted communities such as Palo Alto to identify community or public benefits that they would like to, that we would like to express for their consideration as they contemplate the negotiation. In anticipation for that, or as a result of that, we have heard from a lot of community members and received a lot of correspondence on areas of concern with respect to the proposed academic expansion. And we've identified, for the council's initial discussion, six items in your staff report that we thought best aligned the city's interests and Stanford's interests as a way to encourage the county to sort of take up this opportunity and make these recommendations in their, or negotiate for this in their negotiations with Stanford. The staff report drills into this with a little bit more specificity, but I'll just summarize briefly. The first item, you've heard mentioned here before with city manager Chikada about a downtown coordinated area plan. This is something that would take into consideration the grade separation that is, needs to be studied at Palo Alto Avenue, and also would take into consideration the transit center and improvements that might be needed over at University Avenue. The downtown area plan is something that is a policy from our comprehensive plan, and the idea is to merge these land use and transportation policies into one study. And for this request, we've initially suggested that the council consider an ask of $1 million that Stanford would contribute toward that study. We, of course, would engage other parties that we think may have an interest in that, as well as the city would have some responsibility in funding that as well. The second part seeks to take any implementation from that area plan and apply it to, and have Stanford pay their fair share analysis toward that. And so that's, that's sort of a term of art that we use, and would require some additional nexus analysis and study to find out to what extent does Stanford impact or have some kind of responsibility for their impact or use of either the transit center, the Caltrain Station, or any of the other types of improvements that might be identified through the plan. Additionally, the final environmental impact report identified that there are, there's an impact at Alma and Charleston, and the proposed mitigation measure is not something that is in line with our local bike and pedestrian plan. And so the idea here is to take any money that would be, would have been dedicated toward that mitigation and apply it to the rail crossing, and in addition, do a fair share analysis at this intersection as well, and to have, ask that the county negotiate for further contributions that would be attributed to the traffic going toward the school, to Stanford, and back through that intersection. Just quickly hitting on these other ones, there's the affordable housing fund. This one suggests that for any development within the academic growth area, that Stanford be subject to the city's affordable housing fee, and that would be a direct contribution to Palo Alto. The county, of course, is exploring their own mitigation or housing impact fees that they would have control over. We've heard mentioned here before and elsewhere, the continued interest in the long-term preservation of the foothills, as well as upstream floodwater detention. And those were the top six, and then beyond that, we've identified in the staff report a number of other areas that the council may have heard from the public about areas of interest. I'll just leave those on the board for a second, and then if you have any questions, we can, we can talk further about these. And then finally, just to let you know that negotiations, we believe, are underway between the county and Stanford representatives. So this letter would be timely, and this is something that we're looking to transmit as soon as, as practical. Again, this would be a letter from the mayor, and we would work with the mayor on getting that prepared. Public hearings are anticipated for March and April, before their planning commission, and then with the board of supervisors in May and June. And at that point, we would expect the EIR to be certified and action taken on the general use permit and development agreement, should there be an opportunity for the county and Stanford to come to an agreement on that term. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to the public. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we can. It'll be up on the board. Herb Borah is the first one.
Welcome, Herb. And you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Seth, and good evening, council members. I have four items that I wish suggest that you consider. The first has to do with the funding of grade separations. Stanford is working under a contract with Caltrain on their business plan, and in their 2040 business plan, the main users creating the, the use of the University Avenue station are Stanford University and the medical, Stanford Medical Center, and the main users of the California Avenue station contemplated for 2040 is a Stanford research park. I believe an appropriate condition would be that the Stanford development should not proceed until those grade separations are built, and that Stanford be the major funder, being the major cause of the use of those stations. And if it's not 100% funder, it would then get paid back by the other users, as we do in other development projects, where that first user makes sure that that mitigation is there. The second item is the use of the College Terrace Library. Stanford has a lot of libraries for its academic use, but those who live there, students, faculty, and staff, are also residential neighborhoods. They need a neighborhood library, and the College Terrace Library is their neighborhood library. The library, when someone registers, registers with their residence address, and you could check on the circulation in terms of number of uses and number of items checked out. College Terrace Library is their neighborhood library. The library, when someone registers, registers with their residence address, and you could check on the circulation in terms of number of uses and number of items checked out to see the proportion that is from Stanford campus, to indicate what kind of mitigation payment they can make for that library. Third issue has to do with the, the upstream detention basins. They're suggested by the Creek Authority as using for flood control, but there's another use, and that is that we need to, instead of having all that water go down to the bay, we could use it for replenishing the upward aquifer. And it's, it's that aquifer, rather than the one near the baylands, where it makes sense to recharge the aquifer, and you should be considering that as well. Finally, with the foothills, I agreed to protect the foothills. However, it may need to be a compromise, and for the last general use permit, I submitted a letter both to the county and as to Stanford as well, suggesting that we treat the Stanford foothills the way we do the Open Space District, to have a development of one for 10, and essentially to have protecting 90% of the acres in exchange for 10% development. And to make sure they're protected, they should be annexed to the city of Palo Alto and dedicated as parkland. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be School Board Member Todd Conns.
Thank you. I love your new streamlined look. Congratulations on the, on your new smaller council. I wanted to thank you, update you, and ask you a favor. First, I wanted to thank you because I saw, I'd received earlier and saw in your packet for this evening, the letter that was signed by the mayor, sent to the supervisors, lending the city's support to the resolution that the school board made earlier, asking for full mitigation on the impact of Stanford's growth on our schools. As you know, we asked for three things: funding, mitigation of the cost of building a new school, and the land on which to build it, which only Stanford can provide. So we're very appreciative of the support of the city, and frankly, we need all the help that we can get, because this is a, this, the financing we are looking for, the support we are looking for, the mitigation we are looking for is vital to maintaining the quality of the schools for the next 100 years as we have for the last. Second, I wanted to update you. While, as you, as you guys know well, we can't speak of any matters that are discussed in closed session, I can point out, at our last two closed sessions of the Palo Alto School Board, we have had agendized exploration of a CEQA lawsuit relating to the final EIR. Since the EIR has not been certified, it's been finalized but not certified, there is opportunity, and we don't expect it to be certified until April, there is opportunity, if you, if any party finds it, that the EIR is not correct, to pursue remedies in the courts. And so, you know, we've, our body has agendized that and discussed that in closed session twice. I anticipate that we may continue to discuss it. I urge you guys, if you think there are issues in the EIR that don't address the needs of the Palo Alto community appropriately, that is, legal remedies are still available. The EIR is final but not certified. Finally, I wanted to ask you, please help us and our joint constituents by continuing to insist on full mitigation of all the impacts of Stanford growth on our community. Full mitigation is what we need, and we deserve nothing less. Stanford is a wonderful institution, and I hope to see them continue to grow and thrive and provide great things for our community, but the, the community needs to mitigate the impact of 9,000 additional people coming to Stanford every day, in terms of housing, in terms of traffic, in terms of impact on schools. Anything you can do to help keep that issue in front of the community and educate them. I still find many, many people are not aware of the impact that Stanford's growth could potentially have on our schools, and we view it as an existential issue. So it is, any help that you can give us in getting that word out and making sure people know would be greatly, greatly appreciated. Thank you all very much, and again, congratulations on your.
Before, before you step down, is it, is it allowable that council members ask the public, the speaker, public speaker a question?
Briefly.
Madam former mayor.
Todd, thanks for coming. Have you as yet given what you think will be the approximate number of kids, or at what grade it'll be most impacted, or have you not had a chance to do that as yet?
Yeah, the, well, the district last fall provided a letter as part of comments to the EIR that laid out what we thought the impact in terms of student generation would be from the planned housing. And I, you know, as you know, the, Stanford has proposed a certain amount of housing, the, the county has explored considerably more housing in the EIR, so it's unclear how much housing would be developed. But yes, we have a range that ranges from a low of 275 students to as many as 1,500 students, or 1,435, depending on which scenario the EIR came to pass.
Good, thanks. That, that helps a lot, because when we're talking about mitigation, that's a couple of schools or more.
Yeah.
So, thanks so much.
And I'm happy to provide info to any of you at any time.
Thanks.
Please take advantage. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Rita Verhoeven.
Thank you. So I'm glad to follow Mr. Collins, because I was going to speak to the same issue. I found the wording interesting, that communities who might be potentially impacted, that is really not speaking the truth. How can we not be impacted by this massive growth? And I don't know if it's technical, that the schools work alone, and that you can't put the schools into your six top concerns, but I do think that the city council, I don't know, in my mind, definitely should include the schools if that's allowed in everything that you send to anyone. You know, Todd spoke about the 9,400 and somebody, something. These are employees, students, and teachers, and then there's going to be the people that come with them. So I've heard numbers as high as, you know, four to one for each person, or 36,000 people that are ultimately going to be possible based on these 9,400 people that they expect. The other thing is that I have been watching the real estate ads, and Stanford University continues to buy up property. And then that tax is, I believe, taken off the roll, because they are a nonprofit organization. So I don't know if anybody's looking into that, but it seems like we're kind of getting squeezed both ways. My sister lives back east in Sheffield, Massachusetts, the home of many wonderful private schools. And those schools have what is called a pilot program, and it's payment in lieu of taxes. So this is a well-established way for universities to pay their fair share of taxes. Stanford does not have to reinvent the wheel here. They can just follow what goes on in responsible colleges on the East Coast. So I'm hoping that the Palo Alto School Board is discussing that with Stanford, and I'm hoping that Mr. Semidion, Supervisor Semidion, and the city council, because honestly, I think you're going to have to drag it out of Stanford. I don't think they're going to give you a penny unless you really fight for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Seth, and council members. Looking at the recommendations, at first I thought they were fine, then I realized that there's a few things that are omitted, that are kind of implied but not specific. The first one is grade separation at Charleston. I think we also, we ought to be talking about having a grade separation at Meadow, partially funded, if not completely funded, by Stanford, because both Meadow and Charleston carry a significant number of commuter traffic during the rush hour, morning and evening. Second, although I believe the city's not supposed to talk about school locations or the requirements for schools specifically, if Stanford adds as much development as they're talking about, and as much additional housing, they're going to be adding an awful lot of additional students, and those students are going to have to go to school somewhere. So if they don't build campuses, school sites right adjacent to Stanford, those students will be getting driven to local schools, and that's going to have a traffic impact. So that is an issue that the city ought to be addressing. Traffic impacts from development on the Stanford site are traffic impacts on all of us, and so that's got to be taken care of. One of the other things that I thought was a good start, but not quite finished, was collect affordable housing funds within a six-mile radius. Is six miles long enough? People travel a lot farther than six miles to get to and from work. So I'd take a careful look at that and see if you want to expand that to eight miles or 10 miles. And we have to work with adjacent cities, Mountain View, Los Altos, Menlo Park, East Palo Alto, get them involved also, because they're going to be impacted, just as we are, by Stanford development. Finally, on the Palo Alto Shuttle support, I think we should include specifically Marguerite, and have Marguerite contribute to the Palo Alto Shuffle Shuttle, because they're already running those buses. I think it'd be nice if they ran them through more residential streets and streets in Palo Alto, like in Barcadero, Middlefield, Oregon, Bay Shore. So try to get Stanford involved more in local shuttle bus service, because they're going to be causing an impact in traffic if they don't.
Thank you. With that, we return to council. Before we dive in, let me, I want to ask a procedural question. What is, what is the appropriate outcome of this session? Is it going to be a dialogue, or do you expect, should we be looking to make a motion? Or how do you see this unfolding?
We're just conferring that a motion would be most helpful to us, to be able to have some clear direction for the legislative body as a whole, and ultimately would be used to craft the letter, as John pointed out, to be finalized with the mayor.
Okay. And so a baseline motion would be to request the letter cover the six items proposed by staff? And then we would amend it, or?
Yeah, I think that could serve as a, as a starting place, sure. I mean, I think it's going to depend on where the council wants to go with this, but as a baseline, sure.
So I think I'll just do that as the, as sort of the, the starting point, right? Which is, I'll move that council recommends staff generate a letter, you know, covering the six points in the staff recommendation.
And I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Niss. And probably we should discuss it before we just vote on it. Okay. I have lights from Vice Mayor Fine, followed by Councilmember Niss, followed by Councilmember McCormick. Vice Mayor Fine, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Niss, would you like to speak to your second?
Just checking on those procedures.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I cannot tell you aloud, but I'm so glad Joe is doing this instead of me. And that is sincere. So I certainly support that, but I want to speak to several things that are, that are on this in particular. The long-term preservation of the foothills is something we fought for the last time we did this, which was in the late 90s, and we got it. And I think, I think it's probably going to be one of those things that is sort of a, you know, a sop, but I think it's really important that we indicate how important we feel that is, just as we would with upstream floodwater detention. I, I think both those things are sort of, that's to be expected. Just working my way up this, through the city's Affordable Housing Fund, I cannot tell you how important I think that is. When we think, as the mayor said today, giving his very good speech to Rotary, we haven't done anything with our affordable housing in the past seven years, our Affordable Housing Fund is out right now. It's empty. It has $3 million left for a possible teacher development in the future, but that's still kind of out there. But we literally have almost nothing in the Affordable Housing Fund. And I, I think that one is, is one that we really need to word strongly in a letter, and I very much like to see that included. In fact, I was hearing tonight the mayor of San Jose talk about the enormous amount of money they have in their Affordable Housing Fund right now, and their biggest problem, of course, is how do you find the land and how do you build it? And where do you find currently the, the people who are available to work on a project like that?
Can they send some to us? We'll take it.
There's so much more in this that I, if I could have a chance to have a second bite at it later, but I'd like to have the rest of the council attack it now. I think we're asking for a great deal. I would just also say that Alexa Russo's discussion in, in a recent weekly, talking about workers and so forth, and traffic is equally important. So if no one else brings up traffic and transportation, I'll come back to that one. Did I do about five minutes?
Yes. Well under. Councilmember Fine, or Vice Mayor Fine.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for bringing this letter, and thank you, everyone, for speaking. I'll start with a quick, broad point, and then I'll work from smaller to bigger items. So on the broad point, as Councilmember Niss mentioned, I'm also glad the county is doing a lot of the hard work and the lift on this. I think from our perspective, this is going to be an ongoing discussion, and to put it broadly, we should be asking big. And those things are likely to get winnowed down over time and agreed on in part, so we should be asking for as much as we want, and seeing how that gets narrowed down over the months. A second thing I do want to point out, I completely appreciate Board Trustee Collins' point about fully mitigating the impacts to our schools and other services in our community. I do want to point out, though, there's a bit of a conundrum, that we on the council have repeatedly asked Stanford if they grow to produce more housing to support that academic growth, and then the school district is saying, hey, you know, please pay for the students that come from this housing. So there's kind of a positive feedback here. That said, a couple issues I saw in the letter, thank you, staff, for putting this together. I'm just going to go through a hit list, and I don't know if you want me to just like make amendments to add to this? Is that?
I think, I think, I think the protocol is we're going to amend this list.
Okay. I might speak and then make amendments later, as I see necessary. So first one, I was a little surprised to see limit fireworks for twice a year. That was the one thing I maybe disagreed with, and I was just wondering where that comes from. I know lots of Palatans who really appreciate the fireworks at Stanford. I understand we don't fireworks every week. I thought two might be a bit strict, so just wanted to put that out there. Intersections. The only intersection mentioned, I think, was Stanford and Bowdoin, but there's certainly others around the campus that are highly impacted. I would think of California and El Camino, Page Mill and Hanover, even some of the, sorry? Yeah, in Barcadero, Galvez, all those are certainly impacted by Stanford, and I think the city has had its eye on upgrading some of them for a couple of years, and it may be fair to ask for a fair share contribution there. RPPs, we have a number of RPPs, and if you look at them, all of them essentially ring Stanford. And I think part of the philosophy and documentation there is folks are driving to those neighborhoods, parking in those neighborhoods, getting on a scooter, bike, or walking right over to Stanford. And so there is kind of a nexus there. We may ask Stanford for contribution on maintenance or expansion of RPP programs. Councilmember Ku just, you know, whispered to me in Barcadero, the existing four underpasses we have for grade separations. You know, I understand we have to, we have to do our diligence on how much Stanford is contributing to those traffic, the traffic on those streets, University, in Barcadero, et cetera, but we should take a look at that. Foothill preservation, Councilmember Niss mentioned. I thought your guesstimate of 2,100 seemed fair. I know many people would like to see that being an indefinite ask. I just don't really see Stanford agreeing to that, and so, you know, whether it's 50 years, 75 years, that, that seems appropriate in my perspective. Affordable housing. Where did we get the figure, 82 million?
So that's based on the full buildout of the Stanford GOP times our current fee for housing impact fee.
So in essence, Stanford would be building their academic space, paying the county an affordable housing impact fee, donating to the county's affordable impact fund, and then paying us an equivalent or a dividend. then paying us an equivalent or different amount, but according to our rates. Okay.
And I guess on our, I guess on our letter, we had indicated, that was just to give sort of a frame for the discussion. And even the Stanford DA had recommended a certain amount of money upfront. And so there may be an opportunity, be interested in the council's discussion on whether we abandon that approach that's in the staff report and go with some other interests that we may have to support our program.
Right. I mean, I don't have a solution right now. We may need to do a bit more pencil work, but just using our existing development impact fees as a stand-in seems a little inadequate to me. So we may want to figure out what other justifications we might have for asking, whether it's this amount or more or less. That seems a little odd to me.
As you said, ask for?
Right. I mean, I don't want to just say like ask for 150 million, right? But we need to figure out what is our justification and how are we actually linking those two? And I'm not sure the development impact fees for the city are quite appropriate to charge on Stanford academic lands when they're going to be paying a similar fee to the county. On net new trips, I'm glad to see we're, you know, continuing that. I would point out a lot of Stanford's net new trips, you know, that meeting that standard or not, is based on Caltrain. And Caltrain service is obviously increasing. So I'm sure as all my colleagues are going to mention, there's a lot of connections to the grade separation effort. But I'd also point out, and maybe we should look at asking the county to explore, what would the next generation of no net new trips looks like? Is it expanded hours? Is it data sharing? You know, is it looking at how SRP and the Palo Alto TMA work together and figuring out, is there an expansion in those functions? Oh, one last comment to my colleagues and then I'll kind of try to make an amendment. If you look at number 11, it's looking at transportation demand management via parking Just ask you to please remember that next week when we debate the downtown garage. And anyway, so let me try to make a quick amendment. I'd like to amend that we also include issues of RPP, RPPP, the existing at-grade crossings, sorry, the existing separated grade crossings. And potentially expanding the function of the no net new trips project.
Yeah, I, I'm inclined to accept it. When you say existing grade-separated rail crossings, do you mean they ought to pay their share of grade separation? Is that what you mean?
No, no, so sorry. These are the existing ones that are grade separated. San Antonio, Oregon, Embarcadero, University. And the theory here is that, first of all, if Stanford expands, we know there's going to be more traffic on those. And second of all, in the next, you know, whatever, call it 25 years, we may be upgrading them ourselves.
Right, right.
And there may be a nexus there to contribute. So maybe we should, existing grade separated rate? That's correct, right?
Now, I understand. You're right. It's existing grade separated rail crossings. Okay, that makes sense. Are really what you're driving at is that they ought to mitigate the traffic impact?
Roughly, yes.
Have we captured that anywhere in the, in your list? Because the EIR came back and said, you know, if they do this, there's going to be a lot more traffic in Palo Alto, right? Have we captured that anywhere in our list of, of things that we want them to mitigate?
So we've highlighted a couple of areas mostly related to the grade separation. And later on our sort of additional comments, we talk about some other areas that are impacted, but it's not really a part of the top six.
Okay. Seems like it probably should be, right? I don't know. Do you feel like that issue is adequately captured in point number seven here?
Not, as I'm understanding your comments, no.
Okay.
Maybe someone else can take a pass at that. And the only other ones, and I know, I know some others will hit on it, are probably the, you know, grade separations across the board. But I'll let somebody else take that one.
Okay, well, I'll accept number seven. Second, do you accept that?
If I could ask one question? The no new, the no net new trips project, by expanding that, do you mean by tracking it more substantially?
So as I mentioned, Mike?
Such as Alexa mentioned?
I haven't read.
So, so what she says in essence is, actually Stanford is really counting twice a day, pretty much an hour in the morning and an hour in the afternoon. And I think what you're talking about is expanding the, the
Hours.
The timing or the, the actual amount of time that is spent tracking the trips?
Correct. And also potentially sharing more of that data with the city.
Okay.
So yes.
I don't think that all needs to go in this, but I think we need to understand that that's, that's where we're going. Because from time to time, the very important university in our, front or our backyard has not appeared to completely be in, in, in line with that.
Right. Well, anyways.
Trying to say it delicately.
Thank you. So those are my comments for now. I may have more going forward.
Councilmember Cormack, I think you're next. Or was, let's see, Louie, next?
Louie, you want to go next? I thought you were first.
Great. Thank you, Mary Philseth, sorry. This is a big project, so I will be less brief than usual. Beg your indulgence on that. My second principle of communication is shorter is better. In this instance, I think we would be best served by this letter being comprehensive. We've really just gotten to the point where we have substantially, substantial information about the impact. So it would be my preference that this letter was longer rather than shorter and that we go broad rather than go big. So I'll just go in order here. Question about the $1 million in item one. Can you share a little bit about how you came to that particular figure, if it's related to what we're doing in North Ventura? Just general thoughts?
Sure. So North Ventura is roughly about $850,000. And it's, what, about a 60-acre area? Pretty much a, you know, a pretty confined boundary. With downtown, we're looking at the entire downtown area and we're extending to Palo, Palo, Palo Alto Ave for the grade separation. And then we're also extending that to University and that whole Transit Center that goes beyond that. So it's, it's a substantially greater design effort. And we've sort of ballparked some estimates with some consultants, just sort of back of the envelope. And we've had some estimates that, not counting sort of all these infrastructure analyses that would be required, the economic analyses and, you know, the graphic illustrations of anything that ultimately gets presented, which is going to be key to how we communicate this. Those estimates before all that stuff was coming in around 1.2, 1.3, right around there. So we actually think that from a staff level, that this could easily run over $2 million to study this at the level that we would need to, to understand the nexus impacts of Stanford's growth, Caltrain, the understanding, you know, VTA and SAM Trans, how they intersect with the Transit Center, and how pedestrian movement goes through this area. So it's, it's, it's not going to be, this is going to be a major effort to take on this study.
No, it's clearly markedly more complex. So you're estimating maybe requesting half?
Roughly.
Okay. So that's helpful. Thank you. Fine, really with one through six, thank you. That was just the right amount of information. And let's see, we don't have any amendments on the floor, right?
No.
Correct. Okay. So I'll be, I'll be heading towards one. It's going to be long. I apologize. Honestly, it would be my intention, I'll walk through, I'll walk through them, but to include everything in the letter at this point. So I'll just state that upfront and then, then work through these. Affordable Housing Fund, we've discussed. Was intrigued by Mr. Moss's suggestion with the college terrace library. I noticed that we have under C, college terrace park maintenance. There's no reason the library would be any different, so I'd consider adding that under C. Not as a lump payment, obviously the library is, you know, but in terms of the ongoing maintenance. That brings me to D. You know, this, this, as far as I'm concerned, absolutely has to be in the letter. Working with the Marguerite and extending it, this is, this is a no-brainer to me in the traffic and transportation area. Bull Park, that's very beneficial to our high school students at Gunn and to people who work in that area. And then finally, under, I see we have F, various topics. But those definitely are of interest to me. The bike and pedestrian plan, certainly, you know, Stanford has done a, you know, a laudable job of getting many of their employees to bike. So it'd be nice if we could connect that with our own. And the crossing guard program, you know, is crucial to safety. RPPs, we already considered. So with that, I guess, do you want me to try to figure out which of these aren't on there and add them?
I think we're going to want to be
Is that the most effective way to do this?
Well, I think we're going to want to be at a point where we've got a list here, right? And so
Okay. So you want me to just add the ones?
I think probably so, yeah.
All right, then. So I'll suggest adding the housing development within the academic growth boundary.
And what specifically is the ask there?
Payment of the ongoing fair share contribution to the roadways? The roadway impact? I'm just on, I'm just on page six. I'm just going one by one. Sorry, packet page 64. As an aside, I feel like we should call this a binder rather than a packet. So these are the following additional items. And again, in keeping with what I said at the beginning, it's my belief that we should be broad rather than limit our requests at this stage of the process.
If I can clarify on this
Yes.
Letter A. So this one was anticipating that, so we don't know where the county's going to go relative to any requirement for on-campus housing. And so A says, if there is a requirement for on-campus housing that was evaluated in the E, the final EIR, the draft EIR, then those impacts that were identified ought to be addressed. And so A is related to if additional housing above and beyond what Stanford is proposing is required by the county.
It's foreseeing, okay.
Then those impacts ought to be mitigated. So it's an if then.
Okay. I'm looking at the mayor who looks like
I don't, I don't, I think, I think I understand what you just said. I don't, I don't get that from this, from this line of text, right? So is that, is that, you know, additional, additional housing impacts should be mitigated?
Oh, so what the saying, so if you, on our, our staff report, and that was on page six of the staff report, we kind of summarize it by saying that to mitigate the impacts of additional housing on campus and to address what we would anticipate as more localized trips and reverse commute trips that they've documented, the county and their EIR, that there'd be more impacts locally. And so we're saying, if there's more housing, we want those impacts mitigated.
All right, yes. I'd like to include that.
So, okay, okay. All right.
Okay.
Okay, next one.
All right. County collected affordable housing fund. So this actually gets at whether, you know, we had within six miles, proposal is within one-half mile of transit. Can you help me understand why we would want one-half mile fixed rail location that obviously has some impact on us that's different from transit corridor?
So as I understand it, the Stanford, actually, so let me back up even further. So the current requirement under the 2000 GUP, I believe, and Meg will correct me if I'm wrong, it has this requirement that any affordable housing funds that are provided by Stanford to the county for the purposes of housing has to be used within six miles of the campus. And Stanford, I think initially, has indicated that they would like to eliminate that requirement and have it be within the half mile of transit, which would include, of transit corridor, which would include places like El Camino or elsewhere throughout the, the region. And so our interest here is to, if, if this is the council's interest, to restate a desire to have the housing be located with it, you know, keep this current requirement as we have under the 2000 GUP and keep the, any housing units that are produced within six miles of the academic growth boundary. And so otherwise, if, if, if it doesn't happen, then housing will be presumably distributed throughout the region.
So if that was a requirement of the 2000 GUP, I'm, I'm willing to, you know, have an amendment that we continue that requirement.
And I think I'll just say
Within six miles of the academic growth boundary.
Yeah. And so part of the argument then for wanting housing to be located near the transit corridors or also possibly between, near fixed rail stations, is that you're placing housing near transit and hopefully more of those riders are taking rail as opposed to driving.
That may be where we end up, but happy to stick with what we had before and see, see how that goes. C, so college terrace neighborhood parks, so
Hang on, because you want to add that to the motion, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, please.
The mayor has to accept it.
And also this one is the county affordable housing funds to distinguish it between the city ones, right?
You know, I can think of, I mean, I will accept it, but I can think of cases where it might make sense to put, to spend some of that money outside the six-mile radius too. So it's, it's, it's not quite as cut and dried for me, but I will accept it.
Okay.
So I actually believe, believe this, and I think this is the best way for us to go. But having heard a lot of discussion about this, I have a feeling that the board may go with the, along the transit corridor, indicating that we don't have enough land within that six miles. So we had trouble using that money within the six miles during the, the current GUP. However, being very provincial, I would like to see it used within that six-mile radius.
Okay. All right. Okay, moving on to
You know, and that's kind of the argument that, that, that sort of, you know, I have a little bit of mixed feelings on, which is if you put it in the transit corridor farther south, you know, in principle, you can afford more because land costs less.
That's right.
And so there's, there's some global optimization that's worth considering in there.
And we'll, and we'll let the Board of Supervisors consider.
That's right. That's a good, a good suggestion for the board and they can, they can consider this on their own too.
But as somebody said, you could take the money and you could put everything that we need in Gilroy. The problem is you get to get from Gilroy to Palo Alto.
I mean, we'll take the money.
Okay. All right, so
Thank you. Please proceed.
All right. With respect to college terrace neighborhood, so part of item C would be contribute to the ongoing park and library maintenance, the four, the four parks and college terrace library. Okay, shall I keep going?
You're really just spelling out what's in there.
Yeah, I'm saying I want to add everything in this section. So we're, sorry, it's so laborious.
Yeah, keep going.
But if there's another way to do it.
We, we, we've got another hour on the, on this item, so yeah.
We haven't heard from some of our other council members, so
They'll be brief.
But this will give them something to shoot at.
I know they will.
That's fine. Okay. And then moving on to shuttles. Here, I guess we just request the
By the way, I accept that one.
Oh, thank you.
And Councilmember Niss? Do you, do you accept this?
Yeah. Okay. If I don't, if you don't mind me saying so, for anyone listening out in the big world, you are really taking what's in the staff report and incorporating it into what we're going to send to Stanford, correct?
Yes. Well, the ones that, that staff wasn't sure, they had additional items for possible inclusion. I'm saying I would like them all in there. So if there's some faster way to do this, I'm
As Adrian said, go big.
Okay. I tried that earlier, but it was, okay, I will move, that's what I said at the beginning, A through F.
A through F.
Six to seven, pages six and seven. Unfortunately, we'll have to modify it a little bit, right? Because it's sort of verbiage as opposed to that, so
Right.
Well, we're While we're on D of shuttle, I'll just keep talking while the poor clerk is trying to keep up.
What's, what's, what's a, what's a quick, what's a quick summary of item D?
Request the opportunity to replace the city shuttle program with enhanced service of the Marguerite. It's no secret I'm excited about this one. And will the makers accept that?
Yeah.
Okay, on to Bowl Park. Request $250,000 for signal modifications or other physical improvements for the pathways and an easement at Hanover.
The easement is the controversial one, right? Looking at staff, okay.
No, I'm just waiting, giving them the moment of time, I'm sorry. Is, question for staff, while they're doing that, is the crossing guard program part of our bike and pedestrian plan? Can we combine those when we come to the next bullet, or they're truly separate?
Right, so I think they are called out separately, but for the purposes of this discussion, you can absolutely combine them.
Right on, okay. And then, Councilmember Fine, while we're catching up here, do you think all, both the stations were covered in your earlier amendment?
I don't think so.
Might we add them?
Because I think ours, well, the letter, sorry, the staff report did touch on University and Calav, right?
I don't recall.
Yeah, the staff report, the first six items in the staff report address Palo Alto Avenue and Charleston, and then, you know, University Avenue is an existing one, but-
So, I would suggest it to be both stations and all the grade separations.
Okay, so we'll put that back into seven after we get past this. All right. Okay, shall we go back to seven, then, while we're thinking about that? If the maker's willing to accept adding the two existing stations to number seven?
Yep, I accept that.
Great, thank you. So existing grade separated rail crossings and the two train stations, existing train stations. No one's proposing any new ones, to my knowledge.
There is actually a third.
The Stanford one, right, yeah. Okay, almost there. And now for my final suggestion, thank you, would be around, consider funding for the city's bike and pedestrian plan and the crossing guard program.
For, for area-
I am going all out on this.
There's a, there's a limiter, a delimiter in here for areas that directly address, directly benefit the university, right? You want to keep that?
Yes.
Okay.
So, for areas that directly benefit the university and/or are used by Stanford affiliates. That concludes my request on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. So next, we, Councilmember Koo, followed by, Liz, do you have your light on?
Do I what?
Do you have your light on here? Are you?
But I, sorry, you probably want to ask Tom, and then I wanted to add a couple of things just to bring it up.
So, so we'll go to Councilmember Koo, and then to Councilmember DuBois, and then come back to Councilmember Niss, seeing Councilmember Tanaka absent, and then come back to me, and I have a couple of comments, too. Okay, Councilmember Koo.
Thank you. So, thank you for adding most of that. I think that you spoke to a lot of it, so I don't have to bring that up. Although, I did want to ask a procedural question. This letter is going to come back to council and to the general public to review, or is it just going to be sent out? Because a lot of times, it seems like it just gets sent out without us reviewing it or having the ability to do so.
Right, so, due to where we are in the timing-wise with the county processing that application and negotiations taking place now, the way that we've drafted the recommendation is that we, staff would take these comments, prepare a letter, and that the mayor would review that letter to make sure that it was consistent with the council's sentiments and make any changes that we needed to make. And then, once the mayor was satisfied that it captured the council's interests, would sign it, and we would transmit it to the county. So that would not include a process by which the city council as a whole would have an opportunity to review the letter before it's signed, but of course, we would send you a copy of it once it has been signed. Of course, this is a, you know, we can receive different direction from the council if, if we need to make a change to that, to that approach.
It's, it's, it's kind of like, is it our last shot? I mean, is there another opportunity after this if there's more to send another letter?
Yeah, so as far as the city council goes, so I think that this is our best last chance to really get a council-formed set of recommendations to the county Board of Supervisors and, and county staff. There is the opportunity, when we have hearings before the Board of Supervisors, where we can transmit that letter, and so that gives us a little bit of time between when we submit this one and those hearings. We would just have to make sure that we're lining up those council meetings correctly to ensure that you had that opportunity to, to comment, but I don't know, team manager, do you have further remarks?
Well, I think, I would also assume, and I can't speak with any specificity here because I don't, I haven't heard it confirmed, but I would assume that when there is a draft development agreement, there will be a period of public review, once that's done. And so there, I would expect there will be comments that, that can be received. You know, that said, we are in the midst of a, or they are in the midst of a negotiation process, and quite frankly, under, they are under no obligation to take what we're suggesting. So, the, the calculus here is how much time to spend on the letter versus in anticipation of what the process is to come and how those conversations can proceed.
I guess my concern is, you know, if, if, if this is our one shot, and then we have to keep track of what county is doing and when their public hearings are, and if we miss that opportunity, then we, we don't have the opportunity to go back. But the thing is also, if, help me understand also, at county, right now, they're, they're reviewing and deciding on the conditions of approval, right? So it's not so much on the development agreement as of yet.
It's both, actually.
It's both.
Yeah.
And is there a deadline for the development agreement?
So, but-
Mike?
Yeah, it would, this is completely out of our process. We, we don't have, you know, a standing in, in the negotiation or that, how that proceeds. So it's really between the county and Stanford to, they've plotted out a, a schedule, or the county's plotted out a schedule, and I wouldn't expect too much deviation from that path going forward.
Well, okay, thank you so much. Obviously, you know, there's a lot of general public that's very interested in this. It's a high impact to the city of Palo Alto and to a lot of the residents, so I would hope that my colleagues would consider for this to come back to us before it be, it's sent, it is sent out. Now, on another thing is-
So, I want to weigh in on that one a second, too, and I think, you know, we, as a decision, I mean, it's a council decision whether we want to do this or not, right? I mean, I think the issue that, that the city manager's trying to highlight is, look, this is a letter, and it's going to go to the county, and the county may use it, may not use it, may use a little, a lot, may not even read it, right, for all we know. And our influence in this space is relatively limited. So, you know, my two bits on this is, it's important we get the main stuff in here and we not sort of have missed anything. Is there a question that, you know, is, is it really a worthwhile use of council time to spend a lot of time wordsmithing? It comes back to council, and we all amended and amended and amended and amended again, right? I'm not sure where that fits in our, the grand scheme of priorities of stuff in terms of value and impact that it's going to have. And so I think that's the thing we gotta, we gotta wrestle with, which is, you know, I think this is one of those things where, you know, they'll consider sort of the main substance of it, but that's probably about it, right? And I think that's what we gotta, we gotta consider.
Thank you for considering.
Please proceed.
So, I think in, I would like to add for, if I'm, if I'd have you consider for number 13, for the bike and pedestrian paths, that it includes investigating and seeing if there's pathways within the Stanford Research Park that can connect the ballpark towards the Stanford, towards Stanford University. The Hanover one is mostly over Main Street, but I think that in the morning, the students that are going to Termon and to Gunn are actually using Peter Coates and then cutting across one of the companies to get through. I haven't been able to follow them, sorry, but I do see them kind of cutting through one of the companies at the back, and I don't know where they go from there, but they come out on the other side near the park, the ballpark way. So I would like to see if there's some way to connect bicycle and pedestrian pathways there. Also, if also there's a way to look at the university also participating in another pathway, which is, which belongs to Santa Clara Water District, which runs behind Creekside Inn and Chimalas Avenue, that connects the station, Park Avenue, directly to ballpark, the ballpark's pathway. Right now, it's just closed off, but there's another way that it would be a great connection Also, the historic buildings that are located on the Stanford University's land, I understand that there's some, if, if we could add that either county historic board reviews those buildings to see whether they can be, whether they're actually historic or, you know, to determine whether they are historic. I think there's a lot of buildings on Stanford that actually has historic value, so is that something that-
So, as, as part of the environmental analysis, there was a complete review of the existing buildings and which ones have historic significance.
By Stanford? Was it conducted by Stanford or by the uni, by county historic board?
Yeah, I'm not sure if Stanford had a role in, you know, submitting some information to, to the county, but the county hired the consultant who did the performance, who did the environmental impact report. So it was a third-party review or at a minimum peer review of that analysis. And so, and, and I'll, I'll look to Meg, was there-
Actually, our HRB was as well. So, could we just add it, if, I mean, if the maker and the secondary would consider adding that on just to make sure that we have a way of preserving some of the historic buildings that are on Stanford, and if it is already done, then there's nothing more to do, but if it isn't, I would really like it to be ensured that we do have that historic value preserved.
Okay, so, so anytime there's going to be redevelopment on the, within the academic growth boundary, the city of Palo Alto is not going to be the one reviewing that or issuing permits.
No, not us, county.
Right, so the, in the county, in its review, will either rely on the final environmental impact report that is accompanying the report and make a decision as to whether or not the project, whatever it is, is proposed at that time, is consistent with the document and either allow it to be demolished or not. If not, and if there's additional analysis that needs to be done, the county would have to do that under, under SEQA. And it's, there's, I guess what I'm suggesting is, I'm not understanding, I, I don't know what we would write or how we would respond to that, because it really is something that is embedded in state law. They've analyzed it in the EIR, and the county makes the decision as far as whether or not those resources could be removed or not.
Could I anecdotally say something about this? So when Stanford wanted to redo their stadium, when Stanford wanted to redo the stadium, which you recall was done in nine months, there was absolutely no question, somebody was there all the time checking on the fact that there was a historic burn that had to be preserved. And my recollection from that was that the county was sort of all over that, and I'm going to guess that the county would do the same in, in other situations, given, given what, at least what I observed from that.
So I'm just, thank you, Councilmember Niss. I just want to make sure that nobody's trying to rewrite the national standards for historic buildings, and, you know, I mean, I, that's my main concern, you know, there's so many, there's so much history there, and I just want to make sure that it is preserved, you know, for, for the future. So if that's something that we can add in, I'd appreciate it. If not, then I guess we're going to have to keep an eye on, on, on ensuring that we don't lose part of our history here.
It may be more like that. I think, you know, we're sort of pushing the edges. I mean, I'm, I'm taking the core principle of this as, Stanford wants to build all this stuff, and there's going to be a whole bunch of impacts on Palo Alto, and, and we, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, these get taken care of, right? And then, so, I mean, we're sort of pushing the edges a little bit on that with some of these, you know, we'd like, you know, more paths from the Research Park to, to, you know, Gunn High School or something like that. I mean, it's a little bit because the impact is going to cause more transportation need and, and traffic and, and people that need to move around and so forth. We're sort of at the edge of that when we're talking about, you know, we want to regulate how you build your buildings inside the campus and with, you know, what counts as historical and so forth, because it's not strictly an impact on Palo Alto. So, and then the question is, do we think, do we think the counties, do, do we need to step beyond that and, and say, you know, we don't think, think the county's going to, we don't think the county's regulation, this is strong enough, and we need to impose our own regulations and so forth? And that, that seems like sort of kind of the, it's kind of the space we're talking about here. All right?
Okay, well, that's part of history, and I think that it has a benefit to Palo Alto, in any case. I also want to get a little bit more understanding about the tri-party agreement. I believe that we do have, I mean, we really, I understand that you have to update the tri-county agreement here in your staff report, but I'd like to know, you know, it does have municipal services in there that everybody has to pay and participate for a fair share, and I think that that's something that we have to kind of discuss also and ensure, ensure that we include into this to make sure that each party is paying their fair share. So I'd like to see that the tri-party agreement is included into our motion.
What's an appropriate way to do that?
Well, so that's a condition that we are going to ask the county include in the approval that we have an opportunity to- that we have an opportunity to revisit the protocol and make sure that it's up to date.
So does that, does that make sense as an amendment to this motion?
So we're proposing to do that anyways as part of the letter.
Okay. I mean, I have no problem accepting it, right?
Yeah, not as part of the-
Because I think that's important.
Yeah, so we're, so that was just clarifying for me. So it's not our intent to add that as a development agreement negotiation point, and if that's the council member's intent, then it would be appropriate to include it here. But we are proposing to address it as a condition, a recommended condition of approval, that the agreement be updated. The protocol. The protocol.
Can you say that again? I'm sorry.
So just to clarify, the protocol is an implementation document. I think there's some, I just want us to be clear, there was an agreement in 1985 between the three parties that is not, doesn't, isn't required to be renegotiated in-
Well, not renegotiate followed. So I want to, I want to make sure that it is in the motion, so that when you're writing the letter, it's included in there, so it reminds everybody that we do have a tri-party agreement. I mean, I didn't even know about it until community members told me about it with the institutional knowledge. So I want to make sure it is front and center, that we don't forget about this tri-party agreement.
It's all accepted. Staff understands the intent here, is that there's some language in there stressing the importance of the tripartite agreement?
So, okay, so I-
I mean, the council's going to decide, or, sorry, the county is going to decide where they want to talk about the tripartite agreement anyway, I assume, right?
That's true. So the idea is that we would communicate our interests, that we update the protocol, which implements the agreement. Okay, and then we want to communicate that.
You okay with that?
I didn't hear him.
Can you please repeat?
So, so we have this 1985 agreement between the county, Stanford, and the city. And part of that agreement has this implementing protocol document. And so it's going to need to be, we would like to have it updated to reflect, you know, it's been a while, so we want to update that as part of this effort.
Okay.
So we're seeking to do that. I'm hearing that you want us to really-
Is it a question of updating it or following it?
Well, I think we're following the protocol.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't have, I mean, it's forth a bunch of administrative requirements that Stanford has been responding to, and I don't know of any violation of that agreement.
No, no violation. I wasn't mentioning violation.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that it, that people are aware of it, and as time goes on-
Yeah, so from a, from a staff perspective, we're aware of the agreement, and we have copies of it. It's in our institutional knowledge and memory of our interactions with Stanford. And we think the protocol needs to be updated.
Okay.
So, just very simple, ensure the tri-party protocol is updated. Can you accept that?
Staff accepts it.
Yeah?
Okay.
You know, I would also like to add, Councilmember Cormac had included the parks and college terraces. I'd like to see if we might be able to add Pierce Park, because I do see a lot of Stanford folks using the park as well as the dog park. So if Pierce Park can be included as a ongoing maintenance as well. Maker and second-
Pierce, Pierce Park. Pierce Park's a bit of a hike.
It's along Park Boulevard.
It's half a mile down Stanford.
It's about three to four blocks to the east of campus. It's, it's a little further than the college terrace parks. It's on Park Boulevard as it winds around.
I'm okay with asking for Pierce Park, too. I mean, what do you think?
And the north side of the university uses it.
Yeah, yeah. How much more do you have?
One more.
I'll take the Pierce Park one.
One more is-
If Councilmember Niss will.
I have one more item. Bioswirls and treatment and retention of the water. Somebody was talking about aquifers. I was wondering if Stanford would also consider, I guess they have their own aquifers, but I was wondering if, never mind, I'll take that off. I don't, I can't justify the impacts over there. But mainly, it's just to fully mitigate all the impacts that this development is going to do. Thank you.
I think, yeah. Okay. Next, we'll go to, by telephone, to Councilmember DeBois.
So I want to say thanks to all the council member comments. I agree with lots of what I've heard. I do have a few differences I'd like to highlight, and I try to be quick. I kind of have these in three categories. So, overall, kind of what's our strategy for engaging on the GUP? How do we fully mitigate the impacts? And then some next, recommended next steps? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I'm good.
Eric?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So on the GUP, so I really think we need to think out how we can ramp up our engagement in this process this year. And kind of after this letter, I really think we should consider perhaps an ad hoc council committee, and even possibly a multi-city kind of Stanford cities consortium. Because I've been hearing from, you know, Menlo Park, Redwood City, and even East Palo Alto about the concerns around the GUP. And we need to think about how we can best coordinate, not just kind of approach them And then, in terms of process, I agree with the comments that Councilmember Two was making around making sure we continue to use the tri-party agreement. And I think there's some sensitivity, and I think, I think you guys may have addressed it, but we talked about updating the protocol. We don't want to necessarily reopen the agreement, but we want to continue to use it. And we need to continue to think about what kind of services that the city provides that Stanford is leveraging or using. So I think from that perspective, we should really think about engaging with Stanford as an adjacent jurisdiction. And, you know, I think the approach here, and I think what I've heard from other council members is, kind of a fundamental disagreement, I think, with staff about the approach. And so what I heard tonight was really more of a desire that we list kind of all of the impacts, so we don't limit ourselves to just a handful. And so I think the structure of the letter, or the strategy, kind of needs to be fundamentally And so what I think we should come from, and the way I'd like to see the letter organized, is that at least in this, at this time, in this letter, we really list a comprehensive list of impacts. And I want to make sure that comes through in the letter, and not that we're kind of asking for just a few things. In terms of timing, what I've heard in recent discussions with county supervisors is that they would rather we get this letter right than rush it. There's going to be more opportunity, and that they are really waiting to resolve the conditions of approval before they start to actively negotiate the development agreement. So I think we do have a little bit of time. I have a quick comment on the affordable housing. Again, it wasn't quite clear to me. What I think I heard Councilmember Fine is we are suggesting that there be affordable housing fees to the city as well as to the county. Is that correct?
So, Tom, I think that was staff's answer, yes, that the county has got their own recently approved housing impact fees, which Stanford is challenging in court. And then we were proposing the 82 million, which is just based on our commercial housing linkage fee.
Yeah, okay. So I have a little bit of concern there. I would prefer to see it kind of not appear to be in conflict with the county over the level of the impact fees. And so I think I'd like to see us kind of carefully word this one, and even suggest that we, you know, certainly that we could change our impact fees during the agreement, but that it might be closer to what the county has proposed. I don't want to see us give Stanford leverage to negotiate the county supervisors down on impact fees. I also share concerns, and I kind of support Allison's comment on the six-mile radius. I do think there's some risk that those funds could go fairly far away. And I do think it's a good fallback to come back to half a mile of fixed rail, rather than something that's more general. On the grade separation, again, I support the discussion that we should be looking at impacts to our two stations. And I think there's nexus with all of our grade crossings, and that we're not really doing ourselves a favor by limiting it to just a few of the grade crossings. And again, I think if we think of Stanford as a jurisdiction adjacent to the city, they are relying on Caltrain for their peak, for their no-net trips. And they also have a lot of people commuting to campus that are going to be impacted if we don't have grade separations. Sorry, I'm just stroking the head here. I support Councilmember Fine's comment on needing to change the no-net trips parameters. I think we need to expand the hours as well. I don't think it was mentioned. I think Page Mill and 280 were mentioned, but also knock-on effects to city streets from Foothill Expressway, which is part of the county expressway plan. I think we should call out Foothill. And one of the, one of the things that's happening with Marguerite, there's a fair number of Stanford staff in East Palo Alto, and there's a Marguerite shuttle that goes, I think across the Dumbarton, but does not stop in East Palo Alto. And that, that seems to be something we should highlight. And then when you think about kind of 1,500, up to 1,500 new students, I think we're going to have impacts. It's been mentioned on our crossing guards, library usage, but also I think we need to talk about some of our Parks and Recs programs, particularly children's services, the children's theater, summer camps. I do, I do believe there'll be some impacts there. On college terraces, on the parks, there's another issue there that I think Stanford is buying up a lot of the homes, and they're remaining empty. And I think we should raise the issue with those, those homes should be used and not just remain empty space. Emergency prep funding, impacts on our sewer, our wastewater treatment. Another question for staff, does Stanford use our gas utility and our electric utility?
So, Councilmember DeBois, no, they do not use our utilities.
Well, they use our wastewater treatment plan.
The utilities you were referring to, right.
Yeah, okay. And then one other thing I think we should capture is, there was something in there about construction. Also, having Stanford pay attention to where construction workers would live, and if construction workers are coming in RVs, maybe providing an RV lot on campus for construction workers. And so, you know, I think the list of impacts is quite long, and I would like to see the letter structured to highlight that. I think we can come back and engage on prioritizing that list at another point in time. But there are a lot of people involved at the county that aren't necessarily familiar with Palo Alto, and making sure that, you know, kind of the list of impacts are on the table, I think is going to be important. And so, kind of to wrap up, in terms of, what I'd like to see is kind of next steps, is I think, again, this is a fundamentally different strategy that was proposed by staff, and that I would like to see the draft letter come back to council, not for wordsmithing, but because we are suggesting a fairly dramatic change. And, you know, all respect to the mayor, but I think this goes beyond simply summarizing council comments into an updated letter. It's a fundamentally different approach. So I have, I have two additions to the motion. I think I've kept up with the motion to this point. So the first one would be that, that we return to council with an action item to review a draft of the letter that includes a list of all impacts of the GUP on Palo Alto, and incorporates feedback from council with the goal of fully mitigating all impacts.
So I actually think we ought to vote on that one. Likely it'll pass, right? But I think for procedure, I think we should vote on that one. So I will not accept it. Would you like to propose it as a separate amendment? And look for a second.
Second.
Seconded by, moved by Councilmember DeBois, seconded by Councilmember Koo.
So Eric?
Yeah.
If I could, if I could propose to get both of these out, and then maybe the clerk could email me the current motion, and then we could vote on those separate ones?
That's fine. So we'll continue with the main motion, and this will be a second, a second motion, except we'll probably take it up first.
Okay. And then the second thing I wanted to propose is we'd encourage the mayor to consider formation of an ad hoc committee on the GUP, and also reach out to Menlo Park, Redwood City, and East Palo Alto to form a Stanford cities consortium on the GUP.
On the first point of that, yeah, I think it's actually a reasonable idea to do an ad hoc committee on this, and so I would, I mean, I don't even need a motion to encourage the mayor to consider it. I will consider it, right?
Okay.
Okay.
And the second one would really, I think, be to have you and staff maybe consider this kind of cross-cities consortium, and maybe bring that back with the letter if we propose to have it come back.
I think the, I think reaching out to, reaching out to other cities is a good idea, and an ad hoc committee and staff should decide exactly how they want to do that. But I, that seems like something would fall within that purview.
Okay. So are you saying you don't need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Okay, so if the clerk could just email me the, what they heard from me, second motion, and we could vote on that one.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Niss.
Do you want me to speak to this, or to something different?
So procedurally, we have, you know, the thing that's an amendment is properly a separate motion. I mean, so can we actually do this with sort of two motions, both active at the same time, or should we get this one out of the way first? I'm looking at the city attorney.
I have a longer word to call them.
I'm looking at the city attorney on this.
So I was trying to hear Tom on that, what his intentions were. You could treat this as an amendment, and then you take a separate vote on it, and then potentially incorporate it. Otherwise, you probably should deal with the full main motion first, and then return to this as a separate topic afterwards. It's not, it's not a substitute motion.
Right.
It's a sep, on a separate topic, and you shouldn't have these two on the floor at the same time, unless you want to treat it as an amendment to this motion.
I think it makes more sense as a separate thing, right? And, I mean, right? So can we do that? Can we, can we continue? Are we allowed to continue with the main, the main motion, and then come back to this one as a separate thing, as a second thing?
Tom can withdraw it and then remake it after you vote on the main motion.
Hey, Tom, can you withdraw your amendment? We'll come back to it after we vote on the main motion.
So I don't know why this isn't just an amendment to the main motion. So this is just simply saying what the result of this motion would be, right?
Well, the amendment is, the amendment is, what do we do with the, what do we do with the letter? Do we bring it back to council or not? That's the, that's the amendment, which is a separate issue from what's in the letter. That's the amendment, which is a separate issue from what's in the letter.
Okay, I'm fine with, yeah, withdrawing it.
Thanks. Nobody forget that it's coming back. Don't forget. Okay. Councilmember Niss, proceeding on the main motion.
I'm feeling a little guilty. It's not just about the motion, but many other cities in this country have the same problem. One that I'm familiar with is Cambridge, which has dealt with Harvard extensively, or Harvard has dealt with Cambridge extensively. I know there are people here from Stanford in the audience, but I'm interested, did we look at, for example, Cambridge or any of the other types of cities that are as affected as we are before we began to draft this letter that's going essentially to the supervisors? I guess the answer is no.
Correct.
Okay. I would say there are times when a precedent set by other cities could be very helpful. And I don't recall all that Cambridge and Harvard went through, but it was a great deal, and might be very helpful in the future. Way, you know, when 2030 comes or something like that, and you're still here, Jonathan, and I'm certainly not going to be, but I think there are fascinating things like that that one can look at. But as far as speaking to the motion, I think we certainly included just about everything in here we can include, and I think we probably are ready to vote.
I think we're all, yeah. I want to weigh in a little bit, but I'll be brief. So I think, I think the answer to this is yes, but have we got, have we got covered in here that we want Stanford to pick up part of grade separation since their transfer, since our expansion depends on Caltrain in part?
Yes, for all of our grade separation areas.
Okay. Second question is, is it appropriate for us to include a line supporting PAUSD in here, which is, you know, a critical part of our community?
So no concern from the staff level?
Yeah. So can I add one more, number 16, which is, we support PAUSD's request for full mitigation of Stanford's impact. A comment on that one for a second. You know, I think, you know, we're sort of discussing this, but, you know, I ask myself the question, and specifically on PAUSD. Suppose Palo Alto didn't exist, okay? What would Stanford do, okay, if they were going to proceed with this expansion? And the answer is they'd set up their own school district, right? And they would make an investment in their school district, okay? So why would it be appropriate that they not make an investment in the Palo Alto School District, whereas if we weren't here, they would make an investment in their own school district? You know, that makes no sense to me. So, so I think we ought to support the school district. And finally, I really like Supervisor Semidion's term "full mitigation." Can we make sure those words get used a few times in this letter?
His mantra.
Okay. All right. So I'm done. Councilmember Fine?
Just one last item I don't think we included in here was expanding the, call it list or map, of impacted intersections. So right now, I think the only one in the list is Bowdoin and Stanford. So I would move or make a friendly amendment, hopefully, to expand the list of impacted intersections.
Is that specific enough, or?
I think, you know, you've maybe heard a couple that we've spoken of, you know, Foothill, essentially the boundaries of Stanford.
Yep. So the question is, expanding the list of impacted intersections, is that sufficiently specific for staff to work with?
Yeah, I think we need maybe a little more guidance on that.
Okay, I can list a couple.
Well, I mean, in terms of, is this post, if, is this envisioning a scenario where there's more housing on campus, or?
It's envisioning a GUP scenario where there's more academic space, potentially more housing.
So the impacts that were identified in the environmental impact report are beyond that?
Yes, and so I'd say, you know, the priority intersections that are from the EIR.
From the EIR.
Yeah, that should be fine. And I think, you know, you've heard a couple of the roads we've all mentioned, and you know them.
Okay, thank you.
Cool. So I'll accept that. Councilmember, Councilmember DuBois?
Yeah, I don't think the motion actually captures the comments about grade separation. So I would propose an amendment number three that just says fair share of grade separation, period, and at least the at Charleston, because I believe it includes Churchill, Redo...
I like that. Fair share, just fair share of grade separation, period, not specific to, yes.
Just get rid of Charleston.
Yeah, just not make it specific to Charleston. Is staff's okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine. I was just looking at number seven to see if there was, I thought that's where we had some overlap, but maybe not.
No, that one was talking about...
Existing stations.
Yeah, and Barcadero and University and Page Mill, which are existing grade separated.
Right, okay, so yeah, that's a good catch on three.
All right, I see no further lights. Would you vote on the board, please, on this? And that, Councilmember DuBois?
I vote yes.
Sorry?
I vote yes.
Okay. And that passes unanimously with Councilmember Tanaka absent. Councilmember DuBois, did you wish to make another motion?
Yes, I emailed staff the motion if it's posted. If I could speak to it just for a second?
Councilmember Koo, are you still second?
I do.
Okay, yes, please speak to your motion.
Yeah, so again, talking with the county supervisors, I do believe we have time for this to come back. I would be fine with this being a fairly short action item, but I do think council, because of its importance and because of the number of changes that we suggested tonight, that we have an opportunity to review it. And again, I just feel like it's fairly substantial, so I hope this will be supported.
Councilmember Koo?
I think I mentioned earlier that I think it's important for it to come back. It's a very, very big, it's a huge, huge responsibility, and I think that we should have a chance to review it.
Councilmember Cormac?
Could I ask of Councilmember DuBois when exactly you envisioned this would come back? And then I'd like to understand from staff if that's reasonable?
I'd like it to come back when staff is ready to bring it back.
So, as soon as possible?
Yeah.
Okay. And when does staff think that might be? I'm not ready to vote on this if this is going to take a long time.
While staff considers that thought. One comment I'll share with you that I'm reflecting on, given our last discussion item, which was the study session with, regarding state legislation, is the strategy we talked about there, which is when an issue either of concern or of priority for the council comes forward, that we would pay visits to the legislators and identify, in consultation with our lobbyists, what's likely to get traction and what's not. So I would suggest for the council that you may want to think about the sequence of how a letter gets finalized versus where those conversations and even the ability to get some feedback on what's being proposed by the city of Palo Alto, how best to present that, either via an ad hoc committee that pays visits to the county supervisors or in consultation with other stakeholders, potentially including Stanford University. So that, stalling for a moment, let John respond with the issue of timing, I think it's fair to say, staff is really stretched. And so to the extent that if this were simply a listing somewhat of what was described here, it'd be one thing, but I suspect there's some art involved with the crafting of the letter, so go ahead.
Point of information before then, can I do a quick clarification with Tom? Tom, did I hear you say the word "short meeting"?
Well, I mean, again, I don't want to...
I mean, true, I wasn't kidding. I mean, did I hear you say that? Because we've spent a couple of hours, I think, on it tonight. The question would be, are you looking for like an hour meeting where we can polish this and send it off? Or another extensive, open-ended meeting?
No, not open-ended at all. I don't want to get into wordsmithing it, literally, you know, 45-minute action item to make sure it captured what we wanted.
Can we put 45 minutes into the motion?
I think staff may be, are you ready to respond?
So a couple of things. One is...
I'm fine with it.
Me too.
So I welcome other sort of feedback on this, but just from a, you know, operation, we can't turn something around by next week. And then there's a holiday on the 18th, and so the soonest that we could probably return is February 25th, and you've got a really full agenda on that, on that day. And we've not heard at a staff level that we have the kind of time that has been articulated. From our understanding, the planning commission meetings are taking place in March. So, and I guess the final note I'd make on that is, whatever we end up doing here, I, you generally like to have two weeks' advance release of the packets. I think for something like this, we would ask the council to allow for a late packet or something to accommodate the schedule.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we just have, are working at cross purposes here. We just talked about wanting to ensure that it's, one, it's an action item because it's a significant change from what's already been discussed, and two, given the level of community interest. I would not recommend we shorten the public review period on this item.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful, both from the maker of the amendment and from staff. I don't plan to support this motion. We've, I think, provided a great level of detail tonight. I'm confident that the mayor, working with staff, can create a letter and that the ad hoc committee can continue the engagement that will be necessary after we send the letter.
Councilmember Niss, followed by Councilmember Fine?
If this were, if we could literally agree, and we discussed, we just talked about this 48 hours ago, if we could agree to a meeting that was an hour, I'd be glad to do this. But I think if we have another open-ended meeting, we have done pretty much the same as we've done tonight. I think Tom is really talking about looking at this for a second time, maybe making some additional comments, but basically airing it one more time before it actually goes to the board of supervisors. Am I correct, Tom?
Yeah, exactly what I'd like, you know. I'm fine if we limit it in the motion itself.
Councilmember Fine?
So I'm a little split on this. On the one hand, I totally get where Councilmember DuBois and Koo are going on this for us to review it. At the same time, I am, I feel for staff, and I know we're pressed and we have a lot of important items coming up, and it's important not to get off schedule earlier on the year. I'll also remind my colleagues that the planning commission study session at the county is on February 28th. Generally, it's better to get these letters in early and, you know, just kind of put out what we want. And if we really, really need, we can certainly send another one. We have sent a number of these letters over the past two years. So I feel like this is probably going to pass, but I don't think we have the greatest track record of doing things quickly. And so we've done a lot of work, and I'd rather see us get it out.
That's kind of my view as well. Councilmember Koo? And I'd like to get this done by 8:15, so that we can take a break and come back to the cellphone issue.
Yeah, I just want to say, I just want to say, this is a 15-year plan, and the impacts are pretty big. And, you know, I think it's really prudent that we have a chance to review that letter. So I just want to end with that. Thank you.
Would you vote on the board, please?
I vote yes.
And that fails on a three-to-three vote, with Councilmember DuBois. Actually, wait a second here. How am I reading this? You've got, I've got you as DuBois, okay. So in favor are Councilmembers Koo, Niss, and DuBois, and opposed are Councilmembers Fine, Philseth, and Cormac. Okay, sorry, I was confused, the lights are up there. But it looks like three-to-three, and that means it fails, and so that means it does not come back to council. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. With that, thank you very much. I propose that we take a short break, okay? It's now 8:10. The agenda calls for the next item to start at 8:15. I would like to open it briefly to oral communications again, in case anybody showed up, because we did oral communications a little bit early on the agenda, in case anybody has arrived and didn't get a chance. And then we'll take up the following item. Thank you very much, and see you back here in five minutes. Thank you very much, and see you back here in five minutes. Well, see, do we have a quorum? We have a quorum. City Clerk, do we have any more cards for oral communications at this time?
No.
Super. In that case, we will close oral communications and proceed to the action item. So, can you explain the procedure here? There's going to be a staff report, and then there are two appellants. So, how do we do that?
So, I'll let the planning director tell you what the order will be.
Okay.
Order of appellants tonight?
Right. So, tonight, we're going to hear from the applicant first, and then we would hear from the United Neighbors Appellant.
Okay. So, how long do the applicant have?
Yeah, it's on our agenda. I think it's 10 minutes, but let me...
10 minutes? And then the United Neighbors Appellant has 10 minutes?
Yes.
And then do we hear rebuttals, or we go to public comment first?
Then you go to public comments.
We're going to go to public comment.
And then rebuttal.
And then who does the first rebuttal and who does the second rebuttal?
Yeah. Same order with the applicant and then the United Neighbors Appellant.
Okay. So, let us proceed. And I also, I also see we have two members of the Architecture Review Board here, David Hirsch and Peter Balte. Thank you very much for joining us. Let us proceed.
Great, thank you. Mayor, again, Jonathan Lake, interim director for the Planning Department, here to present to you a wireless communications facilities appeal application. You have a pretty sizable PowerPoint presentation. I assure you, I'm going to move pretty quickly through this, and if you have any questions, we can certainly answer those as we go forward. So, just as a background, Crown Castle has applied for seven wireless communication facility permits at these different nodes. The, a decision was made to approve, conditionally approve, five of them. Two of them were recommended for denial. As the council knows, we are somewhat constrained in our local discretion on how we regulate these types of facilities. We have the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996, which tells us that we cannot prohibit the provision of wireless service and that we cannot unreasonably discriminate amongst similar situated applications. We also have state requirements that tells us that utilities have the right to occupy the public right-of-way. Additionally, we've got an FCC order that went into effect in January 2019 that established a shot clock for small cell applications, and so we have 60 days to review these applications unless there's an agreed-upon extension between the city and the applicant. The subject application has these seven nodes listed on this map here. And this is a photo of the existing street poles without any equipment simulated on And the node 26 in the middle on the top and node 28 on the bottom left are the two nodes that were recommended for denial, and I'll get into those in a moment. The next slide shows what the applicant was proposing in terms of an antenna atop the streetlight, along with a faux mailbox that would be located on the sidewalk. And that mailbox would include the radio equipment to support the facility. This next slide shows you an elevation drawing of the different aspects of the proposed antenna, again, with the antenna array at the top portion with the tapered shroud. The antenna itself would be enclosed within a shroud, and the faux mailbox down on the street level. And the next slide shows you what these faux mailboxes look like. I'm sure you've seen them downtown. We've had a bit of a challenge with these. When they get damaged, the maintenance on them is difficult to have that take place in a reasonable period of time. They're also oversized to anticipate additional radio antennas, but what's proposed in this application is, doesn't warrant a cabinet of that size. And then it also increases the clutter in the public right-of-way at the sidewalk level in an area where we have an underground utility district. On the day of the Architectural Review Board hearing and subsequent to that hearing, the applicant had submitted some alternative design schemes. On the left shows the existing pole, and the two other images show radio equipment side-mounted to the light pole. One is short and wide, and the other one is long but thinner in design. And then on this next illustration, applicant had presented a pedestal-type of design where the radio equipment would be located at the base of the streetlight pole. This is an illustration of another application that was submitted to the city by a different applicant that shows a design similar to what was conditioned for approval on the five nodes. And this one has the radio, excuse me, the antenna, the antennas and the radio equipment, both located within this antenna shroud atop the streetlight. And the, this is, you know, so this is an example of something that we're looking at as far as what's before the council on appeal. This next slide is another illustration. The rendering on the right does not show how that would be tapered as it is illustrated in the line drawing, but you get the sense of how that could be simulated. So, the approval from January 4th includes five small cell nodes with this top-mounted design that we just kind of reviewed, with the radio antennas incorporated within the shroud, no faux antenna, no faux mailboxes or radio equipment that is located on the sidewalk or attached to the pole. The two poles that were, two nodes that were recommended for denial, one had to do with a new pole that was being proposed on the city sidewalk, and it's just in an area where the city does not need another streetlight, and the city did not want to take on the responsibility of also continuing to maintain that streetlight. And there's also other existing streetlight, street poles that are available to accommodate the proposed, a proposed node. And then node 26 was located adjacent to Landing Chateau, which is a historic resource, and we thought that that would interfere with views of that, of that local resource. And in denying this, these two nodes, it was understood that there are other feasible locations in which nodes could be proposed. On this slide, here's just a few to illustrate. And for the other pole, for the other node where the proposed, where a new pole was proposed, this is another example of an existing streetlight where it could have been accommodated. In our review process, the city does have the ability to regulate for safety and aesthetics. And when we talk about safety, it's not the RF emissions that you frequently hear about. We are preempted from engaging in regulation in that regard, though we are able to impose conditions that require that they demonstrate, applicants demonstrate compliance with the standards. But safety in this case could be something like clearances that we want from the sidewalk or from curb face to ensure that it's meeting our local standards and interests there. As with any of these applications, reviewing for consistency with a comprehensive plan and our municipal code is part of the review process. There are two appeals from two different entities that is, that had appealed the director's decision. One is from the applicant. They are appealing all of the nodes, and the other appeal from United Neighbors is appealing the five conditionally-approved nodes. The Architecture Review Board did consider this application on December 6th, and consistently the ARB on this and other applications has indicated that, has not indicated a concern with respect to the antennas located in an antenna shroud on top of the streetlight pole in this case, or in other examples, on top of a utility pole. The concern has consistently been with the radio antennas and how they get placed on the pole. And the ARB has also been consistent in its interest in having the radio antennas be placed underground. And so, the council may recall, I don't know how many months ago it was now, but last year, there was a, another application that was before the council on appeal and in a residential area. And for that application, we had some challenge in placing equipment, radio equipment underground, not only because of the dimension requirements, but also because of the noise that was anticipated to be generated from that facility. Downtown, where the proposed application or the subject application is being considered, with all of our utilities underground, we felt like it would be even more difficult to accommodate the radio equipment underground, and that burden of demonstrating the ability to place this equipment underground falls with the city in this instance. During the course of this application processing and decision being made, with the city has received a tremendous amount of feedback. We've included that information online, and, you know, the vast majority of the comments that we've received have been against the project, largely expressions of concern regarding aesthetics, noise, and consistency with the city's underground requirements. Those that were in support favored the improved wireless coverage.
Mr. Mayor, are you, are you?
Please.
It's, oh, you're not, oh, I apologize.
I'm just taking, just taking a sip of water.
I was going to make a comment.
Okay.
So, this next slide is just, I think we've presented something like this to the council before. It sort of illustrates the space that's required to accommodate the radio equipment underground, the vaulting that's necessary. And here's some examples, one in Santa Cruz and one in RPV. Incidentally, we've had this reviewed by a consultant that the city had hired to help us assess those dimensional requirements for vaulting so that we weren't relying only on the applicant's input, but also verifying that with technical experts in the field. Now, as the council considers this application and the appeals, there is a fundamental policy question that we're really trying to get at with these applications. And the applicant has proposed a design that has a little bit bulkier presentation for the radio equipment, and that can either be placed on the streetlights or on the sidewalk. And the way that the project, and so you would need fewer nodes in that system to achieve the coverage objectives of the applicant. The way that the project was conditioned for approval, it has smaller, it puts, it puts more of the equipment in a smaller location on top of the streetlight or possibly street utility poles for other types of applications, but you would require more frequent placement of those nodes. So, a smaller footprint, more nodes, or a larger footprint and fewer nodes is sort of the policy. of the policy challenge that we have. Let's see, on this next slide, so following up on that and speaking to, oh, actually, can we go back one slide? So with respect to this map, in our conversations with the applicant, it was recognized that more nodes would be required with this condition that was ultimately imposed. And this next slide, and so this map illustrates where those additional nodes would approximately be. And the next photo here shows what these other candidate nodes would be to provide this extension of network or to meet that same coverage objective as was originally proposed by the applicant. And so, again, this sort of illustrates this policy consideration for the council. Okay. Couple other comments. One is, we're currently working on an update to our wireless ordinance, and the objective here is to respond in part to the FCC's order, and it is our intent to create a menu of design options that would allow for a streamlined review. And again, we have a 60-day shot clock where we would have to process these applications under the new FCC order. Your action tonight will likely influence future decisions on how we process wireless communication facilities, again, with this concept of a smaller footprint but more frequent nodes, or a larger footprint and fewer nodes. And we have a number of pending applications on file, including another application from Crown Castle, at least one more. Okay. And then even as recent, I think, as the decision being made, we understand that the technology continues to change and that the applicant has identified even smaller pole-mounted equipment cabinets that could be placed. This one, well, the dimensions are provided for on the screen. I don't know that we have anything to show. With that, with my voice going, that's our recommendation. And I'll turn it over to the city attorney.
While the planning director recovers here, I also have voice issues. Planning director mentioned in his presentation, but I did just want to underscore, these two appeals before you bring a land use item that is really quite unlike your typical land use item, and that is because in this area, both the federal government and our state legislature have regulated what cities can do, all in the direction of reducing the discretionary authority that we traditionally have over a standard development application. So we are here to help you understand the limitations of the law and to exercise your discretion within the area that remains. But I did just want to underscore before you get started that very dramatic difference between this application and a typical land use application that you're used to seeing. Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, before council gets started at some point, invite disclosures.
We now invite the applicant, the first appellant, and you'll have 10 minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Can you queue up my exhibits on my letter? Is that available? You know, I don't have my glasses. I'm going to start. I'm going to try this. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We appreciate, thank you, it's for distance. I appreciate it. Really appreciate your time. I am Michael Shauna felt. I practice out of Newport Beach, and I'm here on behalf as legal counsel for Crown Castle. Crown Castle is a competitive local exchange carrier, which is a term of art in the Public Utilities Code. It means we're a public utility. It means we are vested with a right to go into the public rights of way of the state of California to deploy telephone networks. We're a telephone corporation. We can build those networks, and we run and operate them as an independent entity, as an independent public utility, but as you see in this case, sometimes carriers will join onto the infrastructure that we own, maintain, and deploy. In this case, Verizon is the carrier, but it could be any carrier. We're here, as you know, on appeal to the director's decision on what we're calling Cluster Two, one of three rounds of applications for public rights-of-way facilities. We're here in appeal, but that doesn't mean we're here to wave a sword. We're actually, I've been impressed with the staffs, how serious the staff has been in trying to come up with solutions in the ARB, et cetera. Well, we're not happy with the director's ultimate goal, and we'll explain why. We're here to try to see if maybe there's a solution. We're not here to bludgeon with the law or to otherwise, you know, steamroll through. Our goal is to achieve a network that addresses the city's aesthetic standards, but it's just not the city's aesthetic standards. It's also our radio frequency coverage objectives that have to be met at the same time. So these things, we can't make them disappear. We can't make them diminish in size without experiencing, in this case, a significant degradation of the reach of these facilities. We have to find somewhere in between, and a Goldilocks moment for us as a city and as Crown Castle, the applicant. We've got to find a middle ground. The city is entitled to aesthetic review, but, you know, it's not entitled, and I don't like telling cities what they can and cannot do as a lawyer here, but there is a time and a place where we're moving from aesthetics into regulating technology. And in this case, the director's decision would require us to abandon our 40-watt radios and adopt a 5-watt radio so it can go to the top. The problem with that is, you saw in that slide that was up, I think on page 22 of the staff report PowerPoint, is that that degrades the network by about 50%. And it's cold comfort to tell us we can come back and double our node count with another application somewhere down the line. We're talking about an application before you now to achieve a radio frequency objective within the polygon you saw there, and this solution of the director's doesn't let us do that. And to make matters worse, it's regulating technology, which federal courts have said all up and down the nation. Cities can regulate aesthetics, but not technology. That's FCC-perempted territory. So we really feel that cut into the quick of this network, and we had to appeal it. And especially when you look at the net effect that this had on this network, we lost two sites. We went from seven to five, and then on the five, we went from 40 watts to five watts. We don't have a network anymore. So this decision can't stand. We have to appeal it, but we're not here to fight. We're here to find solutions. Now, I've got a team here that can get into technical questions. Rochelle Swanson, project manager. Sharon James is our government relations manager. Ernesto Figueroa will be an important man tonight because he's a radio frequency engineer. And we've got, you know, technical expertise behind me. I will do my best as a lawyer to speak to what I know about technology. But it's important to know, too, and the reason why we talked about federal law, and the staff did a very nice job explaining the legal constraints on zoning, on the local zoning powers, is because this is not just an enhanced network to allow, you know, data hog apps on your iPhone. This is critical technology for 21st century, critical communications. It's voice, it's everything. And when you have 50% of homes dropping their landlines and the FCC moving to put wireline telecommunications on the vanishing point of the horizon, which is going to happen soon, this is how we're talking today. This is 70% of all 911 calls, so it's a health, safety, and welfare issue, and it's 50% of what homes are relying on as their sole mode of communication nowadays. That's why Congress enacted this law in 1996. It deregulated the telephone corporation, so it allowed competitive entities to come in so that there were reduction in the cost of technologies with competition. Here we are, and here is the network for Palo Alto, the one that the director's decision has resulted in, is not going to achieve radio frequency objectives for us. Therefore, it's a prohibition of service, which has been prohibited by Section 332 of the Telecom Act. It's also, we talked a lot about federal law, the state of California weighed in just a couple of years ago, enacted a new law, which basically, if you don't get these things done in time, they're deemed approved by operation of law, and the legislature says it's helpful, quote, "Wireless facilities have a significant economic impact in California and are not a municipal fair," as that term is used in Section 5 of Article 11 of the California Constitution, "but are a matter of statewide concern." So it kind of illustrates that there's federal and state and local. How do we coexist in this sort of palpably presented here tonight? If we can come up with a network that we can all coexist, then we will have found the balance between federal and local and state and local law. I also, with respect to the director's decision and the city's own consultants, CTC, I think the one thing that CTC did not do is take into consideration the concerns which I'm articulating with you tonight. Columbia Telecom is the one that said, hey, they can just put the radios at the top. 5-watt radios significantly diminish the footprint and result in the double the need for nodes. So what do we do? We've presented a number of solutions for where this equipment could go. Yes, ground-mounted is preferable to us because vaulting, as we've seen, we all concur, is not feasible technically. Vaulting is off the table. Ground-mounted, there are a number of different decorative solutions that we can employ for a ground-mounted cabinet. We understand there's bulk. We're always going to have bulk. I think that's going to be difficult for us to avoid. We just cite these in a way that doesn't result in the incommoding of the public right-of-way to the best of our ability. Aesthetic treatments for the vaults, pole-mounted, as you saw, but there is a, we saw at the end of the staff's report, a new radio that's a bit smaller that we could pole-mount and shroud with a more streamlined look. We will talk about that. I'm not the one to answer the specific questions about that. There is a pedestal mount where we're in the pole but on a base-mounted. In the picture you saw, it's illustrative, but we could do all manner of decorative kind of treatments to those pedestal-mounted cans or radios. Just to give you guys some perspective, the radios pick up light signal from fiber optic cable, convert it into radio frequency, and beam it out through the antenna at the top. So those radios are very critical, and we have to put them somewhere. We also, with respect to the two denied nodes, you know, we did our best to come up with various alternative locations for you guys to consider on those, but the director wasn't able to accommodate any of our alternatives. We think they're viable still. Those are locational alternatives that might be away from offending, you know, where they might find offense with residents or members of the city staff. Ultimately, the new FCC rule has kind of created, it was January 14th, 2019, the new FCC rule is creating kind of a new climate for these things. Cities used to consider whether or not we're filling a significant gap in coverage and whether we're employing the least intrusive means to fill that significant gap. That's off the table now. The standard is any regulation which would, quote, "materially limit or inhibit the ability of any competitor or potential competitor to compete in a fair and balanced legal and regulatory environment" would result in, excuse me, a prohibition of service. So we're not looking really to a significant gap anymore, and we're not looking to least intrusive means. We're just looking to things that materially limit our ability to deploy these networks. That's it. I see my time's running out. Again, I've got resources behind me for specific questions and happy to answer yours as well.
Thank you. We now move to the second appellant, the United Neighbors, and you'll have 10 minutes.
Can everybody hear me? Is that a yes? On behalf of United Neighbors, I'm appealing Director Lait's decision to approve five cell towers that Crown Castle and Verizon have applied to install in the university's south neighborhood. Thank you for hearing our appeal. We're appealing because, in making this unilateral decision, the interim planning director has appointed himself the sole arbiter of aesthetic standards in our city. Mr. Lait has disregarded the judgment of the experts on the city's Architectural Review Board. He has disregarded residents' right as mandated by our municipal code to a public hearing, and he is now dictating to the people of Palo Alto what our neighborhoods are to look like. That is the basis of our appeal. What we are asking you to do is first, to stand up for the Architectural Review Board and the value of the work that they do here, and second, to defend the rights of Palo Alto residents. We are asking you, in short, to undo Mr. Lait's decision. Please consider for a moment who the parties are when it comes to the cell tower issue and how they line up. On one side, there are the residents of Palo Alto, along with us, with residents, are the city's Architectural Review Board, the League of California Cities, of course, which Palo Alto belongs to, the California PUC, former Governor Jerry Brown, and our representative in Congress, Anna Eshu. All these parties are either opposed to the telecom industry's "me-first" plans, or at the very least are urging that the plans be put on hold. And who's on the other side? The telecom industry, of course, plus the telecom industry executives that President Trump has appointed to the FCC, plus our very own Mr. Lait. But why? Why is he putting Palo Alto on this side when what this side wants, and it wants it right now before the litigation pending against the FCC is decided, what this side wants is to install cell tower equipment as inexpensively for the telecom industry as possible. And please understand what inexpensive for the telecom industry means is locating unsightly equipment above ground on city property for a dirt-cheap rental fee. Regarding the five cell towers in question, here's a brief chronology of how we got to where we are today. In December of 2017, so that's 13 months ago, Crown Castle Verizon submitted an application to install these five cell towers on existing streetlights in the university's south neighborhood. That application called for ancillary cell tower equipment to be installed in faux mailboxes next to the streetlights. After allowing 12 months to go by, the interim planning director finally scheduled, as he is required to do, a public Architectural Review Board hearing to consider Crown Castle Verizon's application. That hearing occurred on December 6th of last year, and that's when the ARB concluded that the company's faux mailbox design did not comply with Palo Alto's aesthetic standards. What the ARB decided was that the ancillary equipment for these cell towers should be located underground. To be clear, the ARB didn't say, "This equipment can go anyplace but in a faux mailbox." They said, "This equipment belongs underground." At this point in the process, the interim planning director had three options. First, as is for good reason customary, Mr. Lait could simply have deferred to the judgment of the experts on the ARB and affirmed that the ancillary equipment for the five cell towers should go underground. Had he done this, United Neighbors wouldn't be here this evening. Second, since in the wake of the ARB decision, Crown Castle Verizon submitted a new ancillary equipment-on-top-cell-tower design, Mr. Lait could have scheduled the ARB to consider that new design at their January 17th public hearing. Had he referred the new design to the ARB, again, we wouldn't be here tonight. Finally, Mr. Lait could have, as he has done many times before, entered into an agreement with Crown Castle Verizon to stop the university's south shot clock until after an ARB hearing, public hearing, had been held. Had he done that, again, we would not be here. But instead, what did Mr. Lait do? He approved a cell tower design that the residents of Palo Alto were never told about, were never shown, and were never given opportunity to comment on. Moreover, he approved a design that was never reviewed by the experts on the Architectural Review Board. In doing so, he approved a design that included exactly what the ARB had recommended against, above-ground ancillary equipment. Just so there's no doubt that what Mr. Lait did was unequivocally wrong, please remember that both Palo Alto's municipal code and the city's wireless master license require both an ARB review and a public hearing. In addition, Palo Alto requires telecom companies themselves to hold public meetings so residents can see what proposed installations will look like and ask questions. In particular, companies are required to install mockups, such as the mockup by the library on Newell Road, and mockup was never displayed for this. The design Mr. Lait approved was never even described to the public, much less mocked up. Needless to say, Mr. Lait has his excuses for short-circuiting due process. He says, for example, that he had to do it because he ran out of time. He says, for example, that he had to do it because he ran out of time, but he didn't run out of time. As I said earlier, he could have and should have accepted the ARB's recommendation. Or he could have scheduled an ARB review of the cell tower design for their January 17th meeting. Or he could have simply entered into an agreement with Crown Castle Verizon to stop the shot clock until a public hearing could be held at a later date. But he didn't do any of those things. What he did, in defiance of Palo Alto's municipal code, was simply cut the ARB and the residents of Palo Alto out of the review process. More generally, the February 8th shot clock deadline that Mr. Lait cites is, in fact, utter nonsense. And here's the proof. It has been 427 days, that is 427 days, since the so-called 100-day or 60-day shot clock started ticking. It began ticking on December 4th, 2017, and it has been stopped repeatedly since then, almost always to accommodate Crown Castle Verizon. To give you one example, on March 12th, 2018, Palo Alto deemed the University's South application incomplete. So the city and Crown Castle Verizon agreed to stop the clock for 50 days until April 30th. Following that, it was stopped for another 58 days because Crown Castle Verizon didn't resubmit their revised application until June 27th, 2018. Again, this is just one example. In other words, the February 8th deadline is completely artificial. In fact, the city's master license specifically provides, and I am quoting, "that the city may toll or stop the clock in the event of an emergency as determined by the city or for other good and sufficient cause." It seems to us that protecting the rights of residents and ensuring that architectural review will be conducted by experts who know what they're doing constitutes a good and sufficient cause. It seems to us that preserving due process in the city of Palo Alto is a good and sufficient cause. Now, I should note that Mr. Lait has offered other equally thin excuses for his actions. For example, he told the Palo Alto Weekly that there was no need for residents or the ARB to see the new cell tower design he approved because, and I'm quoting, "all one needs is a little imagination to see the design as initially submitted but a few feet higher. I would like to see a resident who is seeking a permit to expand his home try using that one. Try saying to the city, folks, just use your imagination." Of course, Mr. Lait has other excuses, equally flimsy, but time does not permit me to rebut them. So in closing, I ask you on behalf of United Neighbors to please undo Mr. Lait's decision. We hope you will defer to the judgment of the ARB and stipulate that the ancillary equipment for these five cell towers must be located underground. Failing that, we hope you will direct that the new cell tower design Mr. Lait approved, and approved on the basis of advice from no one but the telecom company that proposed it, that the design be referred to the experts on the architectural review board for consideration at a public hearing. Thank you for your attention, and of course, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. We will now return, actually, we will now go to the public for comment. Before we do that, I think this is probably a reasonable time to look and see if there are disclosures on councils. And we'll start at that end of the dice with Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, I received a lot of email and some voicemails on this. The only person I actually talked with, though, was Jeannie Fleming, and there's nothing that we discussed that's not in the record.
Councilmember Koo.
Just emails to the council from Jeannie Fleming and others, other residents.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Fine.
None.
For me, none.
None for me?
None.
Thank you. With that, we, oh, Councilmember DuVoyce, sorry.
Yeah, nothing that's not on the public record.
Thank you. With that, we'll now turn to the public. How many speakers do we have? We have 15. And so it is now nine o'clock, and so I think we will do two minutes per speaker. Now, the first, or the third, actually, there's a, this is a group?
No, I'm with the law firm, Jorgensen, Siegel, McLaren.
Ah, okay. Okay. Thank you. And you all have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, counsel. My name is Jen Byers with Jorgensen, Siegel, McLaren, Flagle. I'm here on behalf of my clients, the property owners at 362 Channing, Mike Madalo, and Neil O'Sullivan. My firm has been appearing on behalf of Mike and Neil throughout this process. I'm here for two reasons. First, to express our support of Crown Castle's appeal concerning the approval of Node 28M1 at 400 Channing, and two, to make counsel aware that we have submitted a request for a field investigation to relocate the light pole at 370 Channing to the crosswalk at the Scott Street Mini Park. Node 28M1 at 400 Channing replaced Crown Castle's original proposal for Node 28 at 370 Channing. My clients have opposed locating a node at the pole for 370 Channing since September 2017. The pole at 370 Channing, and actually, if you wouldn't mind, I brought a PowerPoint presentation, putting up the slide, thank you. The pole at 370 Channing has no tree coverage and no screening. There's no possibility for it either because of the underground utilities. It's in close proximity to and directly visible from my clients' upstairs windows. And as you can see from the photos, there will never be a way to shade or shield this pole from view. At the direction of the ARB, we worked with Crown Castle to find alternative locations for Node 28, and the result of that collaboration and compromise was Node 28M1, which was supported by the ARB at the December hearing. At that hearing, the ARB also expressed support for our proposal to move the light pole from 370 Channing to the crosswalk at the Scott Street Mini Park. This crosswalk 187 feet away is not lit and it's heavily trafficked. Moving the light to this location will improve public safety. This was supported by Vice Chair Balte at the ARB hearing, and this would not only benefit the community, but it could also be a good alternative for Crown Castle if Node 28M1 is denied. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Tom O'Connor.
Hello. Oops. Hello, how's it going? I'm actually going to start at the end because I've got two minutes instead of one. One of my questions is, why do we have an ARB if the city personnel ignores their recommendations? I believe it was practically unanimous that they were not approving these things. So here's what I have to say. I'm a California state licensed electrical contractor for over 30 years. The city of Palo Alto has been for many decades undergrounding its electrical utilities, including phone, cable, and future fiber in multiple districts throughout the city. And as I speak, it's currently accomplishing this successfully less than four city blocks from where I now stand. Our company has undergrounded an excess of 300 properties in various neighborhoods, both residential and commercial in Palo Alto alone. Once these sections are completed, the only visible utility above ground is, guess what? Streetlights. For obvious reasons, we kind of need them, especially at night. Basically, everything is underneath the ground in some shape or form in a vault, big ones, little ones, deep ones, shallow ones, et cetera. These phone companies are lying. Yes, lying when they say it cannot be done in a flood zone. I repeat, they are lying because I know for a fact there exist prefabricated vaults available on the market, and the company is Sindio Cities, whom I believe has already contacted the city personnel, Palo Alto staff, and council members, and they should have copies of these vaults. If not, I can provide them. They are ADA compliant and even guaranteed on their website that they are completely waterproof even in a flood zone. The phone companies cannot install their equipment above ground on the neighborhoods already converted to underground because there are no poles other than light poles. I'm almost done. Then they will be required to go underground. It's a simple question of cost. Don't believe it's possible. It's not possible. It is.
Thank you. Next will be Susan Downs.
Tell me when to start. Okay. I'm an MIT-trained electrical engineer and a UCSF physician. I'm aware of the 1996 law dealing with placement of cell towers for health reasons. Do you think they knew something? But that doesn't talk about the operation of these cell towers or whether they're underground or find a safer way to place them. There are a lot of health studies, at least by independent researchers. Hardell has shown that Wi-Fi is connected with brain tumors and glioblastomas and acoustic neuromas. Hugh Taylor and Suliman found you put a cellphone there pregnant abdomen and the offspring has brain damage, especially in the hippocampus, which is what's connected with Alzheimer's. Radiation affects intercellular communication and opens up the blood-brain barrier with combination of other things. It can make us very, very sick. And 5G, I understand, has all the frequencies and even the frequency at which DNA resonates. Do you think there could be a problem here? I advocate for the health and safety and find a safer way to do it if they insist on doing it.
Thank you. Yotsna Nimmkar.
Good evening, City Councilmembers. My name is Yotsna Nimmkar, and I'm a resident of the Baden Park neighborhood. I'm requesting you to overturn the interim planning director's decisions regarding cell towers that are against the recommendation of the architectural review board. We all support ARB's recommendations to put the ancillary equipment for all the cell towers underground and not to install any of the ugly bulky equipment on utility poles or on streetlights. This has been approved for University's South. It's also going against the ARB for the second time, approved with respect to the cell towers proposed for Baden Park neighborhood now. We all know it's technically feasible and preserves the aesthetics of our beautiful neighborhood to underground these accessory equipment. So with that in mind, I urge you to overturn interim planning director's unilateral decision that ignores the recommendations of the subject matter expert of the ARB. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, Francesca Kautz.
Francesca Kautz. Thank you. Okay. My name is Francesca Kautz, and I have been a resident in Palo Alto for 51 years. Please support the United Neighbors' appeal of the director of planning's decision. As you know, Jonathan Lait rejected the architectural review board's recommendation and approved without seeing it a Crown Castle Verizon streetlight pole-mounted cell tower design in the University's South neighborhood. Please stop the shot clock so the architectural review board can hold a public hearing to consider Crown Castle Verizon's application and give the public an opportunity to review the design at a public meeting or a mock site. Please do as many cities all over the country are doing and declare a moratorium on any further cell nodes in our residential neighborhoods. This would give the city time to write new cell tower regulations, which should keep the towers 1,500 feet or more from a residential area or school and require liability insurance from the telecommunications companies. The towers add unsightly equipment, overload poles, devalue property, are noisy and dangerous. Verizon can rent space on rooftops of commercial and industrial and city-owned buildings for their equipment without destroying our neighborhoods or put them underground. Those of you on the city council, please ask yourselves honestly if you would be willing to have a cell tower on the telephone pole nearest your home. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to take a slightly different approach. I would suggest that if you approve any of the applications before you tonight, you add a condition to the record of decision that substantially as follows, that either, if either, the litigation currently challenging the FCC regulation that's underlying this, 18133, which is now before the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal succeeds, and that's the San Jose petitioners, why Palo Alto wasn't in it, I don't know. It's diverse cities like San Jose, Shafter, Bakersfield, San Bruno, if that succeeds, or the legislation introduced by Congresswomen Eshu and Spear, HR 530 passes, which would block FCC preemption of local control, that there be a condition that says that anything that's above ground be placed underground. You could require security for that to happen now. I think that's a very reasonable condition. If you approve anything tonight and rely on SEQUA Guideline, Section 15303, I would suggest that has to be supported by substantial evidence. The very project description here isn't individual towers. It's based on concentrated areas. So on that issue, there is insufficient analysis under SEQUA to go forward. But again, why are you ignoring, why does staff ignore a bill introduced by the congresspeople that traditionally protect the peninsula or even not analyze this Ninth Circuit litigation that's been going on for four months that addressed this issue? It's critical. The League of California Cities is in supporting it, as well as the League of California Cities for Oregon and Washington, and such diverse cities as Washington and Cleveland. I fail to see why there should be more wisdom in the city council of Shafter than here.
Thank you. Ann Proter. Hert Quan.
Dear City Council, yeah, my name is Hert Quan. I have written multiple times to you all regarding the cell tower installation and equipment. So basically, tonight, I'm actually speaking on behalf of my two daughters, young daughters, nine and seven, and my wife, who could not be here because they have school tomorrow. But anyway, I promised that I would try to appeal the decision that our interim planning director, Mr. Lait's decision. I asked the council to overturn his decision on University's South, and also, based on the letter that I wrote to you all, please help Palo Alto maintain its reputation of law-abiding and transparency in public policymaking and architectural decisions. We rely on the ARB to make these, all the sound decisions and not by one person who would overturn that professional's opinions, the board's opinion. And also, speaking on behalf, I mean, I actually worked on GPS stuff in the early 90s for aviation, and then I turned, changed my career to do FTTH, fiber-to-the-premise stuff on telecommunications equipment in 2000. So that has been more than 19 years that I have learned about the term FTTH. Why can't the city actually consider FTTH, fiber-to-the-premises for all these telecom equipment and also try to, basically, we ask you to overturn Mr. Lait's decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Ann Proter.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for hearing. All of us residents who are resignedly trying to put our point across that we would like to see these be underground. I worry not only about the noise, but also the earthquakes and potentially having one of these fall on residents. And I hope you overturn Mr. Lait's decision and take into account what the residents want. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kathleen Martin.
Thank you for hearing our comments, counsel. I live in the midtown area, and I'm speaking in support of the United Nations Neighbors' appeal. I'm not used to doing this. I don't do it very often. And I also was very impressed with what the man said about the cities finally waking up to, maybe they can say something about the fact that they have to accept these and they can't even discuss it. And this has been bothering me through the whole time that you've been talking about it. Why can't we go back to the root of this and say, just a minute, you know, why did they get a chance to go in so soon and get this all sealed and sewn up before people woke up to the risks and the possibility of risks? And I think we really need to sit back and, you know, I want to continue living in Palo Alto, but I'm beginning to wonder whether it's such a great place to be if all of this stuff is going to be coming in. So I again speak that please support the United Neighbors' appeal, but go further and think about why we're being forced to accept this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tina Jau. Next is Tina Chow.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tina Chow and I live in the Barron Park neighborhood. I have a PhD in Civil and Environmental Engineering from Stanford and I'm a professor at UC Berkeley. And I care a lot about creating cities which are safe, resilient, beautiful, and inclusive to all people. So I'd like to make a few points. First, the interim planning director says it's not possible to put the cell tower equipment underground in the University South neighborhood because of existing utility infrastructure. But we know, as we've heard from many people tonight, that that's not true. Many other cities have figured out how to do this. Undergrounding makes sense and it's feasible for all of Palo Alto, not just downtown. Underground equipment means lower fire risk, more beautiful neighborhoods, less noise, and less impact on those who are sensitive to electromagnetic fields, which is a recognized disability under the ADA. Verizon can put their equipment underground. It's just more expensive for them. But I say that if the proposed sites do not allow for vaulting, then new locations must be found. There is no reason to compromise our neighborhoods for the convenience of Verizon. Therefore, I ask you to please reverse the interim planning director's decision. Please support the experts on the ARB and defend residents' rights to have a say in what their neighborhoods look like. There are better ways to do this. Please instead bring fiber optic data lines to homes in Palo Alto. The residents want that and it comes with none of the problems that the cell towers in residential neighborhoods bring. So thank you for listening to all of us and for all that you do to support Palo Alto residents.
Thank you. Next, Mary Elizabeth Plowden.
I wanted to come out tonight just as a concerned citizen that I've tried to participate in this process very greatly since I first started receiving postcards in my home. And I just want to reiterate both the aesthetic concerns and also the health concerns that have been surfaced tonight during this meeting. My husband and I live in a residence with our small daughter, which is across the street from one of these lamp posts. I've done a great bit of work with SureSite and the colleagues that are here tonight to try to understand exactly what this means. I've been given maps that have completely fictitious information. For example, a Palo Alto Medical Center description where there's actually a park. And I didn't really have great assurance that these bubble diagrams that we've been given actually really explain to us what the radio frequency transmission impact would be at my residence. My husband is an oncology surgeon here locally and, you know, for us and for our family, as well as the other families that are co-located next to these streetlights, we have severe concerns. And we just wanted to come out and express that tonight, in addition to all the other aesthetic comments that have been made about these light posts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Nielsen Buchanan.
Thank you, council. I'd like to give you some feedback from my neighbors in downtown north. As you know, we've got more than a handful that's interested in the quality of our neighborhoods. To make a long story short, we came away after discussion with a deep appreciation for what the ARB does. And we quickly came to the conclusion that nobody can judge the aesthetics of what Palo Alto needs in the long term than the bona fide job of the ARB. We'd go one step farther as this technology gets roots into Palo Alto, whether it's in the ground or on the trees or wherever. We hope that the ARB could be given a role for every two or three years to take a look at really what's evolved because we think the technology is going to be constantly changing. The size and shape and colors of the boxes are going to be very dynamic, driven by what's available from the technology company. So we see an ongoing role for the ARB to stop and take a look at what's evolving. We're just taking one snapshot tonight. The other is that the technologist in our neighborhood pointed out that technology is going to be driven very strongly by new innovations. And who in the city management, who in the city staff is going to be responsible for seeing this much better technology? We ought to take this out, put new stuff on wherever it's going to go. So I think that's an administrative thing for Ed and John to figure out who's going to drive the technology if it suddenly gets better because it's not going to be static. So thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker will be Leo Pawalowski.
Hello, council members, and I appreciate very much the personal involvement, every one of you who is dedicating so much time to this important to us all process. And I definitely support the United Neighbors in their appeal and definitely it doesn't sound to me feasible at all that one person can deny the public involvement in the discussion and making decision on such important topic as we are discussing tonight. And I do support greatly the concerns that I heard being raised today by the MIT-trained electrical engineer and physician and also other people who are voicing their concern about this process being actually very dynamic in terms of going for new legislation on the subject. And definitely, as the last speaker was saying, that technology moves very fast and we kind of need to go and encompass all those points into one decision, one process, basically, that could be forward-looking in order to accomplish all those things. And not just to make a final point right now, maybe see how we can absorb all the innovation that is going on in our area. And definitely, we need 21st century communication, but we need the health and we need the beauty on the streets. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We now return to the applicant-appellant and actually the two appellants. And you'll each have three minutes to rebut. And first will be Michael Schonfeld.
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. Appreciate the time. There were a couple of comments made. I think the first one I really wanted to respond to was the fact that there was a comment made about how we're 427 days into the shot clock. You know, we do that because we, by the way, shot clocks have to be told by mutual agreement. They can't be unilaterally told even by us or by you. They have to be mutually agreed to. And what we've done, yes, there was some time while we were responding to incomplete applications and you stop the clock for, you know, getting your notice of incomplete application out. We respond, starts again. That happens. But we've also, you know, been trying to be cooperative by putting the stop to it so that we can try to work something out with the staff and try to work something out with the ARB. So I just don't want to be necessarily subject to some negative comment about these shot clocks. They can be enforced, but we can also extend them. With respect to, there were this comments about SEQUA, these are Class III exempt universally throughout the state. There is plenty of case law. One case, which I took up on the County of Santa Cruz case, up to the Ninth Circuit, so, or it's Central District, rather, so Northern District, excuse me, Court of Appeal. And that went up to the Ninth Circuit. So that's pretty established. With respect to comments about the undergrounding, I think that, you know, your own consultant agrees with us that that is, anytime you've got excavations of that extent, one, it's nine times out of 10 and feasible to locate equipment. It's also just, as a matter of environmental, impacts more invasive. So we're looking for above-ground solutions. We're looking for something that we can advance that is as aesthetically pleasing as we can achieve while still achieving our radio frequency coverage objectives.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be the other applicant, or other appellant, Jeanne Fleming.
And Leonard Schwartz is going to be doing that.
That's fine.
Can you hear me? Yes, thank you. Good evening. My name is Leonard Schwartz and I'm speaking on behalf of United Neighbors. To briefly restate the facts here, in unilaterally deciding to ignore the Architectural Review Board, Mr. Lay consulted only with Crown Castle and Verizon. Neither the residents of Palo Alto nor the ARB were shown so much as an image, let alone a mock-up, of the equipment these companies got him to approve. How can that be right? The future of Palo Alto's wireless infrastructure should be debated in the public forum that ARB meetings provide. And the experts in the ARB should be deciding what is in our best interest and in the best interests of our neighborhoods. The cell tower decision-making process in Palo Alto should be occurring in the sunlight of public hearings and not behind closed doors, the way the decision we are appealing tonight was. Unfortunately, this is not the direction in which our city is headed. On January 4th, Mr. Lay issued the edict we are appealing now. Last week, he threw the residents of Palo Alto under the bus again. Specifically, he discarded the ARB's recommendations to place underground the ancillary equipments for cell towers in Barron Park. And instead, he approved massive, ugly, noisy, but cheap-for-CrownCastle pole-mounted equipment. I am asking you tonight to speak up for the residents of Palo Alto and to insist that city staff stop accommodating the desire of companies like Crown Castle to spend as little as possible on their installations in our city. Please do not allow these companies to run roughshod over Palo Alto's beautiful neighborhoods. Please insist that when they place their equipment in our neighborhoods, they spend the money necessary to comply with our aesthetics ordinances and guidelines. As such, I ask you to defer to the judgment of the ARB and approve the five cell towers in University South and indeed in every Palo Alto neighborhood, only on the condition that the ancillary equipment for them be located underground. And failing that, I hope you will direct the cell tower design Mr. Lay approved be referred to the experts on the ARB for consideration at a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. We now return to council. And I wonder, and I'm going to sort of look informally down the table here. We could either proceed directly to questions, comments, and motions. Or if we think there are a lot of questions from the council, we could do a short round of just questions before comments and motions. Anybody feel strongly about either direction? In that case, let's proceed to questions, comments, and eventually motions. So I have Light from Vice Mayor Fine.
Thank you, Mayor Folsa. Thank you, staff, for the report. And thank you, everyone, for showing up and speaking up. Just a couple clarifying questions. So the staff report says that staff does not believe that many of these nodes can be undergrounded. Can you just walk me through that? Why not?
So the burden, as I understand it, and Albert Yang and Molly will help out where, you know, this is not complete, but the burden for having a wireless provider place equipment underground falls with the city. And we know from our experience processing similar applications in residential areas, which have much more space available under the sidewalk or underground, that even in those instances, we ran into some challenges because placing them underground, there's a certain distance or radius around the pole that you can go out before you lose signal, you know, before the signal degrades or the ability to, you would need bigger cables and then that adds to further, you know, aesthetic considerations. There's trees, there's driveways, there's a number of elements in these areas. And then downtown, we have the added complication that all of our utilities are underground, under the sidewalk, in the same types of places where these vaults would be located. And so, and so we came to the conclusion that, you know, well, I guess we didn't go further than that to conclude that it would be, you know, difficult to place them underground. And we had a solution that we thought was an improvement.
Okay.
Or at least an alternative to what was being proposed.
Thank you. And then just the last question. Staff report also mentions a future policy on dealing with wireless facilities.
Yeah, so just clarification. So there's two elements here. One's sort of the policy direction on how we go forward, but then there's also an ordinance that's coming forward to the city council at some point. Are you referring to the former?
The latter, actually.
The latter, okay.
The future ordinance.
Yeah, so there's an ordinance coming that will be presented to the council probably in March or April that seeks in part to advance the FCC order. And I may not be getting the terminology precise, but we have to make changes to our local regulations.
Okay.
And so the intent here is to draft an ordinance that provides for the minimum footprint necessary or applicable to these wireless facilities and to embed in that ordinance the ability for us to moderate or modify the regulations so that as new technology becomes available, we can continue to ratchet this down and make it smaller.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Niss.
So I recall discussing the underground extensively the last time that we did this. And I think for those of us who sat through a very long meeting, was it last summer? That I am ready at this point to make the staff recommendation, which is on packet page 72. And as we have done tonight, conducted a hearing. And there were two decisions that were made by the director. One is the conditional approval of the five WCF nodes and the other one is the denial of two WCF nodes. They're both identified in here. Mr. Mayor, I'm glad to read them out loud if you wish.
Yes, please.
So node 25, 27, 29, node 30 and 31. What, the addresses?
No, that's okay.
Okay. Are the ones that are under conditional approval and the denial is of the node 26 and node 28M1 near 90, this one's near 905 Waverly.
Is there a second? I will second it on the interest of moving it along. Okay? Care to speak to your, any further to your motion?
I'd only speak in general to this. One of the things that we hear on a regular basis with apologies to all of you who have come tonight with excellent arguments is how difficult it is frequently to get reception. And we get complaints about reception in houses. We get certain parts of town that are dead for reception. And the flip side of not getting the reception, even though for many, I realize these are unattractive additions, but the flip side to that is there's going to be some point when you really need to use your phone and you're going to be in a dead zone. We've discussed this many times before and I realize we're always discussing the aesthetics of one versus the necessity of another. So my argument stands. And once again, I think we did something very similar to this last year.
So I'm looking forward to the discussion. I actually have a number of questions that I'm going to want to ask when we come back to me, I guess. Councilmember Ku.
So I have here on packet page 104, what does indefinite encroachment permit mean?
So I need to get a copy of that?
Can you repeat your question?
Packet page 104, item number 53. It says indefinite encroachment permit. What does that mean?
What's an indefinite, okay.
So this is a relatively standard condition for these types of facilities and because they're in the public right-of-way, one requires an encroachment permit.
Why indefinite?
Well, the facility is not, it's not a temporary encroachment. It's one that would last until it's removed.
So do you go review these, so you issue a CUP, right? A conditional use permit for this?
No.
To put in, to put in?
No.
To put in the equipment?
So the application that's before you is that entitlement. The wireless communication facility permit, this Tier 3 permit, is what is, would be granting the ability for the wireless provider to locate its antennas and radio on the streetlights. And what you're seeing here with these conditions of approval are the city's departments taking a look at this application and saying, okay, if you're going to place this in the public right-of-way, we have a requirement that you obtain an encroachment permit, which is standard for any type of activity taking place in that right-of-way.
Is that a one-time fee?
Is there a one-time fee? I'm sure there's a fee.
Is that a one-time fee, the encroachment permit?
Is that a one-time fee, the encroachment permit?
For a permit, there's a one-time fee. I don't know what the permit fee is, but it's, but this is, this is a real standard approach for if you're putting something in the public right-of-way, you need to get an encroachment permit.
Okay. So, there was another matter where you, when the presentation, you said that one of those boxes, the mailbox, was damaged, and you notified the permit holder to come and remove it or to fix it, and it didn't happen. So, what are the compliance mechanism and penalties? How do you enforce that? Did any penalties get, did they get penalized? Was the violation something that you guys looked into?
You know, I'd have to take a look at that particular case. It's not the subject item before the council tonight, but it is something that staff does need to follow up on to see if that's gotten replaced or fixed.
And is it included into this land use action?
No, that's a separate entitlement.
No, I mean, should this happen to this case, to this cluster? Would it, do you have the language in there in order to handle the violation?
If, if the, if the council approves the faux mailboxes, is that what I'm understanding?
Just in general, you know, if they're not in compliance with the permit?
Yes. So, the one that's proposed, we do have some conditions, and Rebecca can help me point out where it is specifically, but we do have these standard conditions that we would require them to maintain the facility and, you know, operation and not impactful. So, we can take a look for that specific condition.
So, how, does the permit have a life?
So, it's condition number 18 on packet page 98 for that previous question. And this permit will, actually, I'll look for some help from Albert on this one. It definitely extends for the term in which the wireless communication facility is located on the pole, and we have the master license agreement. I think that comes into play too, to some degree.
That's right. The city has a master license agreement with several different providers, including Crown Castle, that explain the terms and conditions of their using our utility poles or streetlights. And I can't recall what the, what the term, like the length of those agreements are, but the, these permits would be valid until the, either the master license agreements expired and were not renewed, or the facilities were no longer needed and removed.
I'm sorry, if you said how many years, I didn't catch it.
I'm sorry, I don't know off the top of my head. What I'm saying is that we have basically lease agreements, and once those lease agreements expire, if they're not renewed, that's the time when the permit would no longer be valid.
Do you have idea, 10 years, 20 years?
In the range of decades, yes.
10?
I believe it's 10 years, and then it renews, but again, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact.
Okay, that would have been nice to know, but, okay, so, you're saying, once they get the permit, how long do they have in order to put it up, to put in, to install everything?
So, are permits?
Do we have a cutoff time for them to install?
So, so the entitlement, I think, is valid for a year, and so, after, you know--
A year, they have to reapply?
No. So, just, and I'm just trying to understand where we're going with this. So, this entitlement that's before the council today, if it's approved, the decision would be final today. The applicant would have up to one year to file permits or seek an extension from us up to another year. That's the standard city process. And once a building permit is pulled, I think the building permit is valid for up to six months before certain thresholds need to be met. You know, the city is under a shot clock for issuing those building permits too, but that's a different sort of question from what you're asking.
Yeah, I'm just trying to kind of come to grips with, you know, at what point do we, if they don't, once the permit is given and, you know, the building permit is given, then at what point do we, if they don't build it within a certain amount of time, do they have to, when do they have to reapply completely, resubmit their application?
Right. So, if they, again, I'll look for, my understanding on this is, if this entitlement gets granted and applicant pulls a building permit, and that building permit expires, they would, and that building permit is unable to be renewed through our typical process, then you would, one, the applicant would need to come back and seek new approvals. I think that's an unlikely series of events, though.
And do you have reviews once the equipment is installed?
We do an inspection.
Inspection right after it's installed, but do you do an annual inspection or the, you know, of the equipment itself to ensure that it's safe? And also, does CTC goes back out in order to measure the frequency and the wave and follow, that it follows the health guideline or federal guidelines?
Right. So, we do require, before we issue a building permit to install this, that they demonstrate compliance with, with the, yeah, the FCC standards for electromagnetic radiation. And at, before we sign off on it, at final, we get a report either at that point or within a short period of time after the certificate of occupancy or the final approval, that demonstrates that they are consistent with those thresholds. And then, we have the ability through these, through the conditions, to enforce if there's an issue that's come up, and that has happened in the past where somebody had expressed a concern about the, you know, whether a particular site was meeting the thresholds, and we did go out and have a consultant that we hired investigate that. And so, I mean, there is a process by which we can verify these things if we need to.
So, why didn't you, so ARB kind of came up with their recommendations and their decisions. Can I ask, why did you not, why did you not uphold it?
Right. So, the ARB makes a recommendation to the director on any application that really goes before them. And this application, along with other applications, are considered generally. Those recommendations are supported and approved. In this particular case, there's a fair amount of federal and state requirements that guided the decision-making for this, for this determination. And the ARB's interest in undergrounding was not one that could have, we believe, based on, you know, the information that we had at the time, could have reasonably been accommodated.
I feel like, especially the mailboxes that's on the sidewalks, they're pretty hefty, and our sidewalks are not that wide. So, it does take up space, and, you know, I know that you quote, in the staff report, it quotes the comp plan, but I think that, you know, it's working a roundabout way on the comp plan in ensuring that, you know, that it's usable by pedestrians, and then the thing is, I think it impedes the use with the mailboxes, you know?
Sure.
Which is why I feel that, you know, if vendors wants to come in and, you know, use our public space, they should really find ways in order to make sure it's something that would be best for the city itself.
Yeah. So, can I clarify on that? So, that's a, that's an area of concern that we had as well in reviewing the application. And just to be clear, the faux mailboxes are not, were conditioned, the way that the approval is before the council tonight, the faux mailboxes are not a part of the application, not a part of the decision. The applicant would like to place the mailboxes on the sidewalk. The director's decision, remove that option, and is requiring the equipment to be placed within the antenna shroud.
That would make it more bulky.
Well, it would, what it would do is it would extend the antenna shroud at the top of the light pole, but it would maintain our sidewalks free of equipment cabinets. It would make it taller by about two feet. The alternative is, well, the alternatives are, it's placed on the pole, it's placed on the sidewalk, and we don't have any information right now to suggest that it can be placed underground, so.
Thank you. Well, so, I was watching the ARB meeting, Albert, and you said something about the FCC. So, there's the ordinance revisions that respond to the FCC order, and it'll take some time for the litigation to be resolved, correct? So, it's not been resolved yet.
That's right. A, sorry, the courts considered a request from a number of municipalities to stay the FCC's order. While the litigation was going ahead, that request was denied in early January. So, we're now living with the FCC's order in effect, and the litigation's unlikely to be resolved for, you know, probably a period of year or longer.
And, so, we also have, my understanding is, a couple member of, well, a member of the public also mentioned that there is the legislation that's introduced by Congresswoman Anna Eschew, and also Congresswoman Jackie Speer has just joined in as well to forward that legislation. So, how, how long does it take for the legislation to come forth? What is the process that works through the channels?
Right. So, there's wide variability in that. Our, we have a mechanism by which we are informed and monitor what is going on in Congress in the telecommunications area, and so, we are aware that, of the existence of that bill, but many bills are introduced that in fact are never brought to the floor or voted on. We'll be watching that one closely. It could be that it in fact does not progress through Congress and never, in fact, becomes a law.
So, my understanding is Congresswoman Anna Eschew actually was favorable to the 1996 Act, and for her to introduce this now must say that it, the path, the path to this technology has kind of gone a little bit too fast and out of hand. And, you know, it was a good intentional bill in 1996, but at the same time, the road to hell is paved with good intentions, right? So, actually, I would like to make a substitute motion.
You may.
Thank you. I'd like to deny the record of land use action file 17PLN 00433, and enact a moratorium for any approvals of installation of wireless communication facilities until lawsuits and proposed legislation between parentheses H.R. 530 Eschew, close parentheses, are finalized. And then, I'd also, number three, I'd like to also propose that we join the cities of Burlingame, San Bruno, and San Francisco, and San Jose in the lawsuit. I see you shaking.
We'd just like to make a comment at the right time. I don't wish to interrupt you.
Oh, I think that's about it. I was going to say, just join Mayor Sam Licardo's lawsuit, or sign on as a friendly city to his lawsuit. I know there's a Latin word for that, I don't know it, but I would propose that we take that action.
Thank you. So, we, we did look procedurally at the possibility of intervening in that lawsuit. There are many, many cities who are parties to that litigation, and it is national litigation, so it will impact all of us. And Palo Alto is participating through the League of Cities, but we're not a separate named plaintiff. Procedurally, it's not possible for us to join the litigation now for a couple of reasons that I won't go into here. We are very supportive, and we are monitoring it, and we will receive the benefit of any ruling that is favorable to local control that might come out of that litigation. However, I do want to stress what Albert mentioned, that the 10th Circuit did recently rule a few weeks ago that that order is not stayed. So, everybody, whether they're named plaintiff cities or not, are needing to be in compliance with the FCC order at this time. There is one aspect of the order that doesn't go into effect until April, and that's the ordinance piece that we're going to be bringing forward to bring us into compliance with that. So, unless and until the court either stays or overturns some aspect of that order, it is mandatory and binding at this time. And cities all around the state and country are considering their wireless small cell applications under the terms of that order.
Thank you. Is there a second for the substitute motion?
So, the more, if I might ask, the moratorium cannot happen because you said that the, is it the lawsuit, or that it stayed? So, it hasn't been decided yet, but we still have to follow through with the FCC order?
That's correct. The cities asked for the order to be held in abeyance, and the court said no. So, it has gone into effect.
So, we have to abide by it?
That's correct.
We still have to follow it through. In that case, could it be possible that we follow what Mr. Ross said, to have a condition stating?
I think, before you go, now you're talking about the main, the original motion again. I think we need to resolve whether there's a, I mean, I'd come back to it for sure, okay? But we need to resolve whether there's a second for the substitute motion. I don't see one.
Yeah.
Okay. So, substitute motion, seeing no second, substitute motion disappears. Come back to, coming back to Councilmember Koo, you may now proceed discussion of the main motion you were about to bring up, Bill Ross's suggestion.
On the main motion, I'd like to make an amendment and see if the maker and the seconder would consider and accept to have the condition that was proposed, should the, depending on the outcome of the litigation, if the litigation, this is that, that a significant gap, or whatever the conditions are, if we can have a condition in there to say that these equipment can be revisited at that point. Additionally, if Congresswoman Anna Eschew's legislation goes through as well, that we come back and revisit these.
Thanks, Lydia. I don't think it's appropriate in this motion. If you want to let us run through the motion that's currently there, and then you could add as a second motion, after this either fails or passes, then you could suggest then revisiting that, because I'm not sure that, this kind of, this kind of legislation is often, often proposed--
I understand.
--and often goes nowhere.
Well, I can't vote on a main motion without knowing what--
I know.
--my amendment is going to be.
I'm not comfortable adding that caveat to it at this point.
Okay.
I would second it with some clarification.
Okay, and I'd like to be heard as well.
So, if you would like to propose your amendment as an unfriendly amendment, it sounds to me like you have a second from Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, it sounds like it's unfriendly. So, thank you, Councilmember DuBois. You want to clarify?
Yeah, I think we're approving the conditions of approval, and I think this amendment is to add a condition of approval, that if the litigation challenging the FCC succeeds, or the Eschew-Speer law passes, then anything above ground would be placed underground. That's part of the conditions of approval of this project. I think it's part of the main motion.
I'd like to hear Legal's opinion on that.
Right. So, a couple of notes. First of all, while the FCC September order did further constrain local control, it did so incrementally, and staff has advised me that this application, and also the one you previously addressed, which the former vice mayor, former Mayor Niss was referring to, were under the prior regime. So, just want everyone to be realistic that if cities are successful in getting the September FCC order stayed or limited in some way, that will not restore a full discretionary review to the telecommunications arena as you are used to seeing for-- review to the telecommunications arena as you are used to seeing for customary development projects. So as to the potential to put a condition on like this... So any changes in the legal environment that would provide more discretion to cities, you can, and we certainly will, immediately apply them to all applications going forward. We do not believe that this is an appropriate condition for these applications this evening. If you approve them, you need to allow them to be built and then utilized for their useful life.
So if I understand... I'm struggling to understand what the impact of this amendment would be anyway, just to try to understand it. But if I understand what you just said, if we, let's say for the sake of argument, we approve the staff motion, okay? And the applicant goes and installs equipment based on that motion. And then the cities prevail in reversing the FCC decision. Then what? What you're saying is that that'll apply to future installations, but there's no... nothing that can be done to this installation. Is that correct?
That's correct. And that's standard when you do any development approval. When you approve a facility to be built, the right to do so vests. The owner is not told that if the law changes in the future, they have to tear down the second-story addition on their house, or, you know, move a facility that previously was approved. So this is standard business... way that the cities do business.
So in other words, we can't tell them to have to tear down their equipment if they put it up.
That's correct.
Suppose we approve it, and they haven't put it up yet, okay? And the cities prevail in getting the law reversed, right? Then what?
If you approve it, and a building permit is not pulled, and action's taken to act on it, then new development standards could be applied.
Okay.
So I have a question...
Yes, and that's the case. That's the case even without any special condition. That's the standard law around vesting. So when you approve any development application, it's when the property owner pulls a building permit and what we call puts a shovel in the ground, that they're right to continue under that approval then vests.
Okay. So in that case, on the other hand... Well, okay. In that case, does this amendment actually do any harm to the city?
If to the... If we could interpret it or revise it to be clear that it would apply only until a building permit is issued for the facilities, that would be fine.
Let me see. So we have a proposed amendment and a second. So discussion should now be on the amendment, I think.
May I speak to my second?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I thought you already had.
I think a big question here, and I'd like to hear Molly's response, is, I mean, this is not a building. You know, what does legal life mean in this case? I mean, we have a fairly long lease term with renewal option, and over that time, I expect most of the equipment will be replaced. So could this motion be modified to say that, you know, current life... the life of the current electronics, but once it needs to be upgraded, it would be moved underground?
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember DuBois. And we did not anticipate this line of questions, and so we don't have the terms of our master license agreement foremost in our mind. We will need to comply with the terms of that agreement. And I... We will have to go back and review and see what our commitments are.
Okay. Well, so the reason I supported this amendment, and I think one of the members of the public spoke to it, I mean, talking about policies around this, the technology moves so fast, the amount of space needed is gonna change so much over time, that I do think being able to move these things underground as soon as it's feasible. And I understand the concept of we're gonna approve something, and they should be able to use it for the life of that equipment. But I think that that lifetime is fairly short-lived, and there's the ability to kind of continually upgrade the equipment. And I'd prefer not to have that continue to be above ground. So I'd be happy to modify this motion in a way that would allow staff to go back and look at kind of a legal requirement. This is not, you know, a building that's gonna be there for 40 years. This is equipment on a light pole.
Councilmember Koo, I believe Councilmember DuBois is proposing that language be added to this to clarify that it applies to installations which have not yet been permitted. All right? Are you okay with that?
I want to ask a question, though. If a law has been voided, doesn't that make the... what we granted not valid?
No. Not once the right has vested and the facility has been constructed. That's how we get legal non-conforming buildings. So, for example, it was permitted to be a certain size, and then you've reduced the size allowable, but we don't require that the building be torn down and rebuilt. It's legal non-conforming.
Yeah. Yes. I'll go with Councilmember DuBois's language.
That's not quite what I proposed.
What did you propose?
What did you propose?
So I guess I will add what you said there, if you could repeat that, that it would apply to not yet constructed locations.
Not yet permitted.
Not yet permitted. But I also wanted staff to look into the ability to require going underground if it's being reconstructed or upgraded.
And I would recommend, if you're going to pursue that, that include, to the extent allowed by the city's contracts and agreements, and it also has to be feasible. We have had a challenge with feasibility. It was described by the planning director. That concept predates the FCC's September order. So even if the litigation were to be successful, or Anna Eshoo's bill were to go all the way through Congress pass and be signed by the president, we would still need that to be feasible. So we need that concept as well.
That would be fine.
So can we add that to the motion? Does... Can the clerk... Can clerk follow that well enough to... Now, my understanding is that the issue with putting them underground is that it's not feasible, right? Not the FCC order, right? That staff's interpretation.
That's correct. Yes.
So if it's still not feasible, then it doesn't matter whether the FCC order's in place or not. Is that...
Yes. That's an accurate summary.
Okay. I want to do...
What does this say? It ends in "and."
Oh...
To the extent feasible.
To the extent feasible. I want to do a quick time check here. Our policies and procedures say that at 10 o'clock, we do a time check. We actually have one more item on the agenda tonight, which is a very minor one, which is setting the council break periods, right? So is everybody okay with proceeding as is, and we'll see how far we get? Okay. I would remind everybody that as time goes on, right, once we hit 11 o'clock, we said we're gonna have motions to continue every 15 minutes or something like that, so...
Until 11:30.
Until 11:30, yes. So, okay. So, let's see. So now, would anybody... I'm gonna clear the lights here, okay? And would anybody like to speak to the amendment? Seeing no lights to speak to the amendment, let us vote on the amendment, okay? Let's make sure that... Are you... Are we all comfortable with the language here?
Could I see it, please?
So Legal has asked for a few minutes to work with the clerk to capture the language that Councilmember DuBois wanted.
You want us to clear the lights, then?
Already did. Let's see. So let us... Let us continue with the main motion, then. So I had, but I cleared, lights from Councilmembers Cormac and also Vice Mayor Fine. Councilmember Cormac.
Certainly, on the main motion.
You talk about the main...
Many people have expressed...
Back to the main motion, yeah.
Yeah. Many people have expressed frustration this evening, and, you know, I certainly share it. There's a very big difference between what we would like to have and the situation that we all face tonight. I do look forward to the better process when we have our wireless code update. In the meantime, you know, based on the staff report and providing a safe environment with clear sightlines for people walking, biking, and driving, I'm gonna be proposed... I will be supporting the main motion. I do understand that this means we will receive additional applications in order to achieve the coverage that the applicant desires. Earlier this evening, the interim director asked about policy, and, you know, I'll just be clear that I would prefer a smaller footprint and more nodes. That's consistent with the expert testimony that was given at the ARB. There's certainly been many conversations tonight about ARB process. I would lump that in under the frustration that I'm sure everyone felt. I would note Mr. Liu's abstention during the ARB because undergrounding wasn't presented, the lack of, you know, visual information. You know, this has been a difficult situation, given where we are in the process, so I want to acknowledge that. And that concludes my comments.
We're aware of that, Jeanie. Council... Vice Mayor Fine, if you can go. So how are we doing on the amendment?
Eric, I'm applying to procedure. Can we move to the main before we do the amendment?
No.
Well, then the amendment could become another motion.
I'd like to do... I'd like to do it like this. Councilmember Tanaka.
So I have a question for staff. So in this area, do we have existing underground vaults, like to service equipment? Like, because it sounds like the utilities in the area are underground, so there must be some underground... existing underground vaults. Is that not right? Does staff know?
I believe the answer is yes. We don't have specifics about what equipment is down there, or where the vaults are, but, you know, throughout the downtown area, we do have utilities undergrounded.
Yeah. Yeah, I see them on the sidewalks. That's what I figured. And so I guess one question for you guys is, you know, instead of trying to add vaults, is it possible just to use the existing vaults? And if necessary, put up a pole next to it, like another light post? Is that possible? Or what's... I'm just trying to understand the limitations in terms of...
Generally not. The existing vaults would be sized to maintain safety requirements for access to existing electrical equipment, which is typically what the utility would be underground for, and as such, would not be sized in a way that would accommodate additional equipment.
Okay, thank you.
So I actually had a question for the ARB. And I see we have both Peter and David here. Peter, thanks for joining us. Appreciate your coming out late on the night here.
Good evening. I'm Peter Balti.
Thank you. So I think, probably like a lot of us here, which is, you know, I don't like any of these options, okay? But the undergrounding seems like, you know, the least unpalatable one, right? Other things being equal. I'm struck that the ARB approved an option which staff says is technically unfeasible. How did that happen? I mean, how can that be?
That's... It's not quite true. What we said was that the extra equipment should not be visible. It should be placed somehow out of sight. Our determination was that there just was no solution that allowed the equipment to be mounted on poles or to be left above the ground. We were very clear that we do not have a solution. It's not our job to tell the phone companies how to do it. Members of the board believe it's possible. We've heard testimony from other people who say that it's possible to place these things either underground, or more carefully concealed in vaults, or newspaper racks, or mailboxes in a way that would meet the standard. Our frustration comes from the fact that the applicant made really very little effort to take our advice to heart and try to find a solution that would work. And so we're left with no choice but to say no. Typically, an applicant listens to us, takes our advice seriously, comes back with an alternative that might work. In this case, they did not. They said a vault would only work if it was 16 feet by 12 feet by 6 feet deep, that allowed a man to work on it with a whole bunch of equipment. And it just doesn't make sense. And we're not new here. We make some sense out of it. And we found there's other companies who make these things that seem to say that it's possible. This is new technology. The need for these are coming along very quickly. And our judgment was that there must be some other way to do this. And we found our hands were just so tied. It's either a yes or a no answer when the applicant doesn't work with you. And so in the end, we feel terrible having to put it to this situation and not figuring out an answer for you. That's what you want us to do. But in this case, the applicant's not working with us. Staff is being hamstrung by this. They don't have the resources to figure these things out themselves. So here we are. That's the answer.
I'm not sure that made this any easier. Anybody look at putting these on... I mean, at least some of these on... I mean, I understand private residences and so forth, but public buildings, is that a potential site for any of these kinds of things in general?
I'm trying to figure out what your question was. Can you just restate your question?
Did... I mean, is there any possibility of putting these things on public buildings?
So, yes, one could put... And we have them. Yeah.
Just not enough public buildings.
Just not enough public buildings.
In the right locations.
Right, locations. And that applies in this case? And then, you know, it appears that other jurisdictions can vault these things, okay? And I remember that was a viable option when we talked about it last summer. It was a different neighborhood, and it's different technologies, and stuff like that. And at that time, you know, the issue was, well, we could vault them, but then we have to put fans on them, and they'd be noisy, and so forth, right? So how come... How come they can be put... Vaulted in other places, but not in these places?
Well, so with respect to the subject application, we don't believe that there's sufficient room underground downtown because of our existing underground utilities. And with respect to the prior application, our noise standard in which we evaluate these... the ambient level of our residential neighborhoods can be quite lower than some of these other communities.
Ah, and it's higher downtown.
Yeah. So, well, I'm not really speaking about downtown right now, but just in general. You know, different municipalities have different tolerances and acceptance levels for noise. And it just so happened that for the applications that we've reviewed previously, that it appeared to be tripping our noise threshold.
Well, it seems to me that the whole thing hinges on whether you can vault them or not, because, I mean, unless there's a lot of dissent, I think the staff recommendation is sort of the... I want to say second-best option, but it's really the second-least-worst option, or some kind of... Whatever words makes that work. I think the mailboxes, you know, I mean, I think somebody's picture, the potential hazard. I mean, people crash into them and stuff like that, right? So... And then the applicant has said, well, actually, the cylinders on top of the poles is... they think is technically unfeasible, but you folks... think is technically unfeasible, but you folks, you know, their competitor can do it, right? Is that, is that the argument?
Sure. So, the applicant has said that the director's approved design with the cylinders on top of the poles doesn't give them the coverage that they want with the five nodes here.
So they have to put more, so we got that?
Right, and so, you know, I guess they also told us, however, that they could get that coverage if they added seven more locations, if they doubled the number of locations.
Ah, okay. Okay. That is my questions. Tom, do you want to speak, Tom, do you want to speak to the main motion?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna vote, oh, yes. Why don't, why, yeah, why don't we do the amendment first?
Can we add a Congresswoman an issue? Congresswoman.
We request to add Congresswoman. So does, so does the amendment say what we want?
Yeah, that's good to know.
I believe it reflects Councilmember DuBois's intentions.
Let us then--
Yeah, please.
Any further comments on the amendment? So then, would you vote on the board, please, on the amendment? Councilmember DuBois, how do you vote on the amendment?
I support my own amendment.
Councilmember Cormac, are you voting against the amendment?
Yes.
So then, the amendment passes four to three, with Councilmembers Cormac, Niss, and Fine opposed. Okay. With that, we return to the, so the amendment is integrated into the motion, and that we return, with that we return to the main motion. Councilmember DuBois, did you wish to speak further to the main motion?
Yes, if I could, and apologies, I have two comments. So I'm trying to understand kind of the volume needed to support these antennas, and I understand that the volume seems to vary with the radio size. You know, if we think about the volume of the entire pole, that seems to be quite large, and I do wonder if, you know, an entire pole could be constructed to support an antenna. Question for staff, I mean, again, my understanding of the law is, what happens when another telecom company wants to put a similar antenna? Do we have to support that on the same light pole?
That's a good question.
So, staff's position would be no. Their telecom companies do have a right to make minor modifications to existing facilities, but they can't do so in a way that defeats the stealth, or camouflage, or aesthetic qualities of the installation. So, in most cases, with the small cell deployments, we have them designed in a way, if you added more, it would defeat the stealth or camouflage. That's not the case for a macro cell.
So it's really first come, first served on these small cell locations?
Well, I think that's, if I can jump on here, I think that's actually a really important point, because if we, for the sake of argument, uphold the director's decision, which says, put these Alexa things on top of the streetlights, can the next applicant come and say, well, we want to put a mailbox next to the pole? And the answer is, legal is shaking their head, the answer is no.
Next to the same pole, I think we, we would recommend that that, that be denied. Now, the competitor may find a nearby pole that meets their needs and apply for that one, and we would need to consider that.
Right, okay. Sorry, I interrupted you, Tom, please proceed.
No, thank you, that was fine. I wasn't really clear, if we pass the staff motion, what is the repercussion of the two denied sites?
Please repeat?
If we pass the staff's motion, which denies two of the sites, what's going to happen? Are those going to come back in the future? Wasn't clear.
Yes, we would expect, because the carrier has said they do need seven nodes, or more in the case of the staff recommendation, we would expect them to apply for alternative sites, and we will need to consider those.
Okay, and, again, I thought I heard Jonathan Layte say that there was a newer proposal for smaller side-mounted. It wasn't clear to me, is that considered as part of the approval, or we're mandating that it be the smaller radios and everything be on top?
So, this, this smaller design is not part of the application that's before us, but it would be a radio equipment box that would be attached to the streetlight, and what is recommended is that the radio equipment be included in the antenna shroud atop the streetlight, and not hanging off on the side of the pole.
Okay, thank you for that. So, it, it did look like there were several nodes that were very close to City Hall. It looked like nodes 25, 26, 27, and 29. Was there any evaluation of antennas on top of City Hall, you know, through various corners of the building? I think 25 is like right, right in front of City Hall.
So, so in our, thank you, Councilmember, for that question. In our review of the application, we did actually ask the applicant to identify some additional alternatives, and, you know, we didn't really get that kind of response. So, this is the application that we had to process, because this is what was filed, and this is what we needed to review.
Okay. I don't know if the applicant would be willing to respond, it just seemed like there were several locations that we could put even higher-powered radios if they were up on, up on top of City Hall.
Got a question for the applicant here?
If you heard the question, yes, I'd love to hear your thoughts.
Yes, Councilmember DuBois, I did, I think I heard it, I'm going to try to answer it. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Michael Shaughnessy, I felt for Crown Castle again. We are a CLEC, as I said earlier, Competitive Local Exchange Carrier, with a CPCN, that's a certificate of public convenience and necessity, and I hate to throw all these acronyms out, but these entitle us to deploy in the public rights-of-way. To, and analyze sites outside the rights-of-way on private property, on public, on public sites. It's outside, really, the realm of the permitting, permitting authority of the city because of Public Utilities Code Section 7901. So that's our vested right to be there. To move us out, that's, that would be in derogation of our right and license to be in the rights-of-way. So these are rights-of-way facilities, they're designed as such. The model is designed around rights-of-way, the license agreements, the permitting, et cetera. So, no, we did not consider outside because of the myriad realms of unknowns about negotiating lease rates with the city and/or, you know, private property owners. We stayed in the rights-of-way. Now, there have been some, some situations where, you know, we've been willing to consider city property for elements of our facilities, if there's an agreement to treat, the city will treat that as right-of-way. So, we have, there's precedent for that in the past, but our, we have identified on these, especially the denied sites, and also these approved ones, various alternatives, either locationally or design-wise, and we feel like we scrubbed them. So, for the chairman of the ARB to say we didn't do enough, well, for one thing, we weren't allowed to come back to the ARB, and so, we are more than willing to look for mutually agreeable solutions. These, as I said in my opening comments, we did present them, our alternatives were ignored. And, and I think, I think, just to Chairman's point of the ARB, the fact that, it was quite clear in the record that it was infeasible to underground, we were looking for a solution in between what the city, what we wanted and what the city wanted, so we can come to a compromise. We feel like there was a bit of recalcitrance on the part of the ARB from our perspective. But anyway, sorry, I think I gave you more info than you wanted, but I'm, thank you.
Mayor, mayor.
Yeah, so first of all, I have really appreciated the applicant's tones and tone and responses tonight. I do think we have, I don't know if it's Verizon or other companies who have antennas on City Hall, it's one of the tallest buildings downtown, and if there were a way that we could move several of these sites, and the city was, city staff said they were willing to work with Crown Castle on this, I would highly encourage us to consider that. Moving on, I was surprised there was relatively little about noise in the staff report, and it would be useful to see a comparison of noise levels for different designs. I do see in the record of approval, it talks about our noise ordinance, and I'm, but I'm not sure if our noise ordinance covers things like this, that could be constantly emitting noise, you know, with this kind of a max noise and the average continual noise. Jonathan, could you, could you just speak about noise for a second?
Yeah, so, we, we are not anticipating that these radio, the radio equipment's going to require a significant amount of noise-generating equipment. It is possible that there would be some fans within the antenna shroud, but it's not anticipated that it's going to trip our, our noise threshold, and that's why we've added that condition, to ensure that there is compliance with those requirements. But unlike the previous discussion that we had with the noise in the vaults, that is a, that was a more significant sort of fan system, and would have generated more noise than can be, than we are anticipating with the, the proposed application, or as conditioned.
I would, I would encourage staff to really think about noise when you come back with this ordinance, particularly if, you know, additional companies can come, and we have, we have these on lots of poles, so, you know, we might want to have something beyond our current noise ordinance, when we think about these things in aggregate. So, I just kind of ran through some questions, I have some quick comments. First of all, I want to say again, I appreciate the tone at Crown Castle, and I hope that we can solve this in a productive fashion, not just for this application, but for future applications. And I think everybody seems to be motivated to get it right. And I also want to say I'm thankful to the ARB, and I gave their recommendation a lot of weight, they had some really thoughtful comments, and they really looked at each individual site. And I think it's important that we consider each individual site, and that's not something that council has been able to do tonight. And then, I also think that, you know, our community is highly educated. These weren't kind of Luddites coming to speak to us, but they were doctors, and engineers, and PhDs, and I think they have real concerns about the impact on the community. And, I'm not sure we got our money's worth from the CTC analysis, it sounded like there are some constraints based on radio power that really needed to be factored in. And I'm also thankful that we're not going to get a lot of these faux mailboxes, and so I'm happy that the staff has directed away from that. I myself can only send so many faux letters. So, I, I do think noise and aesthetics are really important for our community, and that we don't spend as much time talking about aesthetics as we should. Traveling around the country, I see some cities that are pretty hands-off, and they have a lot of ugly antennas. And, I do, I do, I am concerned about the proliferation of antennas, and I would actually prefer to see fewer rather than more sites. And so I do have concern about the smaller power. I would really like to see us encourage the use of rooftops, and if the city needs to help make that happen, so that it looks more like a public right-of-way, I think it's something we should really consider. And then, some more thoughts about the city policy update. I don't, I'm a little concerned about pre-approved designs that could become out of date very quickly, and I want to make sure we're getting kind of the newest, smallest designs, rather than having some cookie cutter, cookie cutter designs approved that are cheaper and larger than what current technology would require. So I would still prefer an underground solution. I, this is an underground district, it's very different from the previous time, we talked about undergrounding, where we had utility poles, not, not streetlight poles. And most, looking at the map, most of these proposed sites are at intersections where the sidewalk is quite large, and we may need to relocate some utilities, but I would, I would support finding a way to underground as much as is possible. So, I just want to quickly go through the specific nodes. Again, Site 25 appears to be right next to City Hall, and I would support putting it on the City Hall roof. Site 26 was denied. Site 27, I would support City Hall or undergrounding. Site 28 was denied. Site 29 is directly across from a church with a large people, and I understand, again, that's a private location, but there's also a large underground utility box there at that intersection, so it looks like undergrounding there is feasible. And then the other two sites, 30 and 31, again, I would also support undergrounding. So those are my comments. I, I do think to my colleagues that we should have some discussion about having a lot more of these antennas that would go with the suggested all-at-the-top design. So thank you.
Councilmember Koo, you have a light on.
Speaking about noise, what is the decibel of the noise?
Some early reports on the certain types of equipment that would fit within the envelope approved by, or conditionally approved by the director, around 40 to 45 decibels.
Forty?
Forty to 45 decibels.
Forty to 45.
And again, you know, that high up in the air.
So the one on the ground doesn't make any noise?
The larger RRUs, the RRU 32s are silent, and other different types of equipment have different amounts of noise.
In the air, it does make noise?
It depends on what, what technology is proposed. Some, some smaller equipment does have some noise generation in the round of 40 to 45.
Do you know this one? This, this application, the noise decibel on this one?
There's no noise proposed in the current, in the design proposed by the applicant, there's no noise with the faux mailboxes.
There, there may be a need for fans.
The cone on top of the pole, is it actively or passively cooled?
So, right, so there, there may need, there may be a need for the fans--
Right.
--for the project as conditioned by the director.
Right. In which case, the noise is 40 to 45 dB?
We would anticipate that, and it's required to comply with our noise ordinance.
Right.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I just make one clarification?
Yes, please, Jonathan, go ahead.
So I just, I just feel compelled that I have to make this note. The applicant's legal counsel made reference about an inability to return back to the Architecture Review Board, and staff would have been more than happy to go back to the ARB, but due to the constraints of the shot clock, and not an ability to reach an extension agreement on that timeframe to allow for that kind of review, we did not have that opportunity to go back to the ARB and present any other alternative designs, or even have this kind of discussion that we're having this evening.
I understand. Thank you. So, I see no further comment on the main--
Mayor Phil Seth?
Yes.
Councilmember DuBois advises that he has a motion.
Councilmember DuBois, so, a quick time check here, it is now 10:30. So, sorry? Okay. Councilmember DuBois, you wish to make a motion? A substitute motion?
I think it's actually a modification-- I think it's actually a modification to the existing motion.
So, an amendment to the current motion?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I would like, first of all, I'd like to ask staff if they're willing to have a discussion about using the city rooftop as a public right-of-way, or if that has some implications that we're not willing to work to live within.
So, council member, I'll start, and then perhaps Albert would like to add on. That's not the application that's before us right now. The applicant did not identify City Hall, and it's not one of the alternative nodes, and it's not really something that is before the council on appeal right now.
So, that means we've done no work on it? We don't know if it meets the applicant's needs for networking?
So, my thought, and you can tell me if this is just not feasible, would be to request to extend tolling on the shot clock and to have staff work with Crown Castle to evaluate the rooftop for Sites 25, 27, and 29. And I would leave it the same for the remaining sites.
So, that actually sounds like a substitute motion to me.
Well, no, I'm not saying anything about Sites 30 and 31. And I'm agreeing with the rest of the motion, just changing it for Sites 25, 27, and 29.
He wants to?
I think council member DuBois is asking the staff to ask the applicant to extend the tolling agreement and explore locating nodes 25 and 27 and 29 on City Hall.
So, council members, if you're inclined to do that, you should do that right here and right now. We don't have an ability to leave this meeting without a decision unless we have the applicant's agreement to extend the shot clock.
Applicants?
Is there a second, actually, to this?
All right. So, yeah, I was going to ask, so is there a second to council member DuBois's motion?
Second.
Second, by council member Koo. Please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, Michael Shaughnessy on behalf of Crown Castle. You know, I got to correct the record. I did make an offer to extend the shot clock 30 days from this hearing date, and it was declined by staff, so that, I want to clarify the record first. Second, as to whether we want to extend it now, after we've gone through the work of this appeal, and we appear to be opening up another endless Pandora's Box of alternatives here, I have to confer with my client before I answer that from this podium. So, if you'll allow me time.
Please proceed.
So, I just want to be clear on my motion. So, the motion would be, as council member Fine stated, with approval for Node 30 and 31, and denial for Node 26 and 28M1.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, ready to answer. A couple thoughts. First off, we're not inclined to start exploring city properties at this stage. There is a confusion, apparently, a conflation of notions about what these are. These are right-of-way facilities. They're designed to go on streetlight nodes. They're locationally dependent. They have very small radius of coverage. Moving these around to, you know, we're not sure that the city would agree to treat them as right-of-way. We don't think the technology even works for rooftops. Macro sites, we see quite a few of that go on them. I've entitled one here in the city for Crown Castle's tower division. These aren't towers, these are micro cells, so they have to be low to the ground. So, I just, I don't think that's a fruitful area for exploration. The other concern I had with the motion was there was, I think, a move towards undergrounding. Maybe we haven't gotten to that yet, but we've already determined, I don't think there's much more discussion about undergrounding that is warranted here.
So, council member DuBois, we have a substitute motion on the floor to explore with the applicant alternative locations on City Hall if they're willing to extend the tolling on the shot clock. And the informal feedback from the applicant is that they would decline the opportunity to extend the tolling. So, you may either withdraw your motion, or we can vote on it.
Well, I understand from the city attorney that if they're not willing to extend the tolling, then it's meaningless. So, I would take that as a no, they were not willing to extend the tolling.
That's my interpretation.
Right.
So, then, do you withdraw the substitute motion?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no further comments on the main motion, are we ready to vote? Please vote on the board. And council member DuBois, how do you vote?
I vote against the motion.
So, the motion passes four to three, with council members DuBois, Koo, and Tanaka opposed. So, the director's decision is upheld. Thank you very much. Thank you to the applicant and the appellant, who have spent a lot of time on this with us, and hopefully this will proceed.
Mr. Mayor, it has not been addressed on appeal. We were denied a public hearing. No cash pay for a public hearing.
You don't need to take a separate action.
We don't need to take a separate action on this, right?
The implication of the order is to deny United Neighbors' appeal.
So, that was part of, that's part of the?
You have not heard this gentleman say, he acted voluntarily to control the shot clock for an additional 30 days, and city staff declined the offer. We have a right to a public hearing. We have rights to the experts on the ARB reviewing this plan. I agree.
Let us correct the record since a member of the public is repeating this statement.
Right.
So, I need to correct the record on the?
They only said nothing that was honest when you were expiring this entire meeting.
When council for Crown Castle offered to extend the shot clock by 30 days, that was approximately 10 days ago, and it was on the condition that it only be to extend the time before the council's hearing in order for them to have more time to respond. So, it was not in order for, it would not have allowed any of this matter to go back to the ARB, simply to delay the date of the council's hearing.
Why didn't you hold that hearing until February 17? What's wrong with that, sir?
I think we're going to move to the next action item. This is sort of not, this is not authorized procedure. This stuff is not agendized. The public has not noticed. Right? I think?
The law has a right to express outrage, and it is being expressed. We have the right to be?
Please, please, please continue to express it, but we have to move on to the next item here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm going to have to hang up now, have to move.
Okay.
So, I appreciate you guys letting me call in.
Thank you for joining us this evening.
Bye.
With that, we move on to the final action item of the night, which is adoption of a resolution scheduling the city council break and winter closure for 2019.
Still moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? With that, would you vote on the board, please? And that passes unanimously with council member DuBois absent. With that, we move to state and federal legislation update and actions, which I assume there's very little since we had the?
Already covered.
Already covered. Council member, questions, comments, and announcements? Council member Koo?
So, I just wanted to find out, you know, council member DuBois, Holman and I, we made a colleague's memo about celebrating the Palo Alto Day. Is there any update for us on what is happening? Because this is our 125th, and it's coming really, second month has gone, it's coming to, we're into our second month.
Could I have the floor?
Huh?
Could I have the floor?
You may weigh in.
Information sharing.
As far as I know, as far as I know, the chamber, in conjunction with the leadership group, was choosing the day, and it had very much to do with school vacation was. So, I don't have that date, but I will text Judy Kleinberg and see what date. They had three dates they were considering, but they all revolved around school.
Thank you.
Work is underway.
Okay, yes.
I believe that the, there's some save the water, race to the earth date in March that will be in conjunction with this. I've seen some communication on that. Does that sound vaguely familiar, a race on a Saturday? Perhaps our mayor who's a runner?
It's a great race to save water.
That's the one. I believe there's, I received some communication that that would be in conjunction with the 125th.
Well, we're?
We're revisiting that.
At the risk of a little furthering a conversation, we are co-branding the anniversary, the 125th anniversary with a number of events.
Okay.
So, it won't be on the same date, but we're?
So, that's not exclusive.
We'll call it the season of celebration. Don't quote me on that.
Also, the VTA is having a meeting this week. Do you have the details maybe you can announce?
I do not, but as the council has heard, there is some interest on proposed route changes from VTA, and so we are tracking and getting information on it.
I'll be there and report back. At a high level, they are looking at, you know, going to the next phase of their next-gen service, which I believe two years ago, we tepidly endorsed the 80-20 solution, and they moved like an 83-17 solution. Now, they're moving to a 90-10 solution, which concentrates more service in San Jose to our detriment, including overnight cuts to the 22.
Okay. Seeing no further lights, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.